Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee meeting Thursday, March 21st, 2024. We are resuming regular session and I would like to invite, returning to open session, I'm sorry, and like to invite everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to begin with public comment. Please remember to state your name and your address, please.
My name is Helen Picard and I live at 447 Waverly Road. And I came tonight to offer a top 10 for Andrew McDevitt during his 12-year tenure on the North Andover School Committee from 2012 to 2024. Number 10 is four successful election campaigns and collegial relationships with fellow school committee members in order Chris, Lori, Stan, Brian, Zora, David, Amy, Holly, Helen, Pam, Joe, Alyssa, and Dave. That's number 10. Number nine, overnight field trip approvals process and the much-loved but short-lived policy for alternative snow days. Number eight, excuse me, yeah, number eight, hired three superintendents, Dr. Hutchinson, Dr. Price, and Dr. Gilligan, retained one on a successor contract, enabled all superintendents to retain Dr. Mealy as deputy superintendent.
Here, here, yeah.
Number seven, district-wide initiatives, Raze, Race to the Top, Strategic Plan, Model Classrooms, Chromebooks, eBooks, Habits of Learning, Leading the Nation, MCAS 2.0, Park, Alice, Universal Free Meals, Parent Liaisons, Professional Teacher Status Celebrated, and 14 Educator Hall of Fame Inductees. Mr. McDevitt has been in the district longer than eBooks. Number six, elementary-level achievements, the Thompson Turnaround, Class Size, Reopen Libraries, Eureka Math, Writers Workshop, Foundations, and Understanding Our Differences. NAMs Achievements, Project Adventure, Nature's Classroom, ADL, Boston Celtics Partnership, Civic's Slick Pro, and the exoneration of Elizabeth Johnson, Jr. High school achievements, these guys have a thousand things to say every week, I'm just going to say a couple. Specifically to Mr. McDevitt, Nights on the Run, Track Dedication to Alexander P. Faris, Cross-Country Course, History Lab, Robotics, Neosk High School Accreditations times two, and the new high school schedule. Number three, Crisis Response and Management, From Coaches to Athletes, Gas Explosion to Natural Disasters, The Ill-Fated Standards-Based Reporting Pilot, and COVID. Number two, Teachers' Union Negotiations, From Traditional Bargaining to Interest-Based Bargaining to Expanded Bargaining, All With Favorable Outcomes That Enabled Consensus Budgets. And number one, The Facility's Legacy, Green Repairs, Kittredge Gym, School Administration Building, Recreation Complex, The Anne Bradstreet Early Childhood Center, Facilities Master Plan Two, The NAMs Expansion, and the MSBA-funded Kittredge School Project, in addition to all those pesky paving and drainage projects. With gratitude and for your contributions and congratulations on a job well done.
Can I sit down today?
Sure. Stan Limpert, 43 Stone Cleary Road, just a couple of comments. First, Pam, I wanted to thank you for your, unfortunately, too short service, right? All the fun you could stand. You really did a great job sort of stepping in as a new committee member as the chair under some difficult circumstances and I think we all really appreciated what you did, so thanks for your contribution, we really appreciate it. So, we've had a lot of fun together, you know, it's been, we served, what, five years together, you and I? And, you know, since Helen has pretty much summed up everything, every accomplished, you sound like a politician. Thanks to you, everything worked, right? Everything was done, so that's good. The two things that really stand out to me that Helen mentioned were contract negotiations for which you were very instrumental, and also hiring Dr. Jennifer Price among the three superintendents Helen mentioned. I sort of think of that as our sort of Camelot episode, right? We almost did it, right? It was a wonderful time, we thought it was going to work, and it really worked for a while. And you and Brian were really helpful, really instrumental in making that all happen and that really gets started off on the right foot, so I really wanted to express my appreciation for those things and for being able to serve with you and all the contributions that you made as Helen's identified, so thank you very much for your service to our community.
Holly Vitski, 385 Raleigh Tavern Lane, thank you Pam and thank you Andrew, both for all of your service, it was a pleasure working with you both, and I truly mean that. My fondest memory of you, Andrew, is every time we would have a presentation and we'd go around for the member comments, you would always say, "Just one quick thing." Besides it being never quick and never just one, you had such a historical knowledge of the district and everything you said was on point and relevant, and your ability to remember meetings nine years prior and who said what and what they said was remarkable. You have such a grasp on the district and it served everybody well, and you were both actually extremely prepared for every meeting and it didn't go unnoticed, so thank you and enjoy your retirement.
Good evening, Mark Svenson, 201 Haymata Road, first of all, thank you Pam for your last few years of service. I do want to thank Andrew, as I think I may be the only one in the room who ran against him for school committee, and I do appreciate the fact. Well, you're right, you're right, you're right.
I did too.
The only person who ran against him and lost. Anyway, I appreciate the fact that you were the only opponent that showed up to the debate with me with the League of Women Voters, we had a lot of fun that night. And as I said to the news reporter, when I lost, I was very happy because I felt that the school was still in very good hands with you and Dave Teresi, so thank you so much for your many years of service, you've done a great job and it's been a pleasure to watch you work over the years, thank you.
My name's Amy Mabley, 219 Main Street. Pam and Andrew, I just wanted to thank you for stepping up and serving our students, families, schools, faculty, community. As you know, a few people do, except for evidently several who have gone a couple times and stuck it out and appreciate you as well, but we really appreciate, I appreciate your time and dedication, my husband wanted me to say his as well. People don't realize how much work you do as school committee members beyond these every-two-week meetings, there are subcommittees, there are emails, there are phone calls, there are events, school events, a lot of things, and so you put in a lot of time and I totally appreciate that. And often, your service for all of our families in North Andover makes you miss out on stuff for your own families, and not everybody realizes that. So thank you for that and appreciate those sacrifices that you've made. At times, it can feel like a full-time job, in addition to, you both have full-time jobs, and I trust that your service has been something rewarding for you and that, at least most of the time, you've been happy to be part of it. Couple of things for you, Andrew, in particular, special thanks because 12 years of service is pretty serious, and during my six years on the school committee, you were the only member who was here all six years, so that's kind of interesting as well. You started when I, you were here when I started and you were here when I left. And you started your, when you started your work, your 12-year stint, there was a lot needing to be done in the district, a lot going on, a lot of revolving doors happening in different areas, but during your tenure, you did manage to work on some of the most important initiatives in the last 15 years. Helen hit on most of these, I think, anyway, but we finally got a superintendent for longer than a three-year contract, worked a lot on smaller class sizes and that's been going really well, better contracts for teachers, coaches, staff, repeated increases in funding for the school budget, that's taken, that took a lot of time over the years to make sure we got more than 2%, and you worked really hard on that over the years, so thank you for that. All the school renovations, expansions, constructions, so many more things. And I know that you like to be in the know, and I know it's going to be hard for you to leave, you're going to miss all this, but I hope that you realize that you've earned this retirement and you've done a great deal for everything in North Andover, so thank you so much.
Anyone, oh, anyone else? Okay. Yeah. Oh, please.
Good evening, my name is Sasha Weinrich and I live at 21 Sawyer Road. I am speaking on behalf of the North Andover CPAC Executive Committee. When we advocated for a third-party special education review, we implored the school committee to establish a separate subcommittee to oversee the review. We were met with opposition from the committee at the time and were continually told by certain members of this committee that a subcommittee was not required. We were told that CPAC would be an integral part of the review process and have input and access throughout. Unfortunately, this did not happen, and the only interaction we had with Urban Collaborative was a little over an hour virtual meeting in the fall. In fact, we were not provided a copy of this presentation in advance and we received it when it was posted only 10 minutes before 7:00. Given this, we formally request that the school committee establish a subcommittee to oversee the implementation of Urban Collaborative's recommendations to include members of North Andover CPAC and other members of the community. We appreciate this consideration and will continue to advocate for the subcommittee in coming weeks and discussions and appreciate the opportunity to hear the Urban Collaborative present tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. So, you now have recognition?
Yes, we have recognition now and we've got from Mr. McDevitt and Ms. Petrowski. And first, we'll start with Pam, so Pam, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for all you've done for our school community the last three years. Your perspective as a parent and as an EL teacher in a public high school has been invaluable, your dedication to our district and our students has been unwavering, even during a global pandemic. You led the committee as chair during negotiations and your passion for education and constant commitment to making this district better was clear throughout, so thank you so much for your service, and we have something for you, but Andrew as well. Andrew, your dedication to this district and our students has been unwavering. Your passion for education and constant commitment to making our district the best it can be and a better place, especially for the underdog or for the historically marginalized students, has been remarkable. During your 12 years, and I don't have to read this part because I think Helen Picard covered all of it and more, quite a few accomplishments, and I forgot about the gas explosions. But most of all, I want to thank you for being a great sounding board. You've always been available to give guidance and provide a listening ear, and in fact, I would often talk with you more than my own wife. We will miss you and thank you for all that you've done, and we have some gifts. And for Mr. McDevitt, we have something additional. Andrew, you've done 12 years, so you've been here the 12 years, you know, and kindergarten is not compulsory here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You've been here as long as your son, who's the senior, and so with that being said, we have a diploma for you, and it reads, "The North Andover Public Schools certify that Andrew McDevitt has satisfactorily completed his civic duties as a valuable member of the North Andover School Committee from 2012 to 2024, and therefore is awarded this diploma given this day, the 21st day of March 2024, and it is signed by the superintendent and many, many school committee members during that time you were here." So, you're going to walk across the stage to have a picture. Oh, wait. For your car.
My turn, finally?
Yes.
All right, so everything's already been quite well said, I just want to add a few personal notes. As the new, as a new person on the committee this year, Pam, you were really instrumental in helping me learn about the role of the chair, and I will always appreciate that and I will miss you. Andrew, we went through the negotiations together, what if, I didn't realize when I started, when I volunteered to do that, that I would then be the chair three months later and have a lot of extra work to do, so your institutional knowledge and help with that was immeasurable and we will all miss both of you tremendously. So, from us, just from the school committee, for you, and one for you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again, both of you. We are going to miss you for sure. All right. Oh, yes, please, absolutely.
And we have families here too, including, just one thing. We do have a Zoom in from, it looks like Fordham University.
Looks like, look like LeBron's out there, yeah. There he is, mutem. Just one thing, and I'll be quick. Just thank you very much, I couldn't do this without the support of my wife Liz and Matt, John and Rachel, and they've heard me on some really good days and some really grumpy days, and when we were talking about how I wouldn't be coming to school committee anymore, I think my daughter summed it up the best and she said, "Does that mean we still do takeout on Thursdays?" But Helen, I think, summed up, you know, a ton of things. We do great things when we work together, and I've really had the privilege of working with some great people, from Chris Hottle, Kevin Hutchinson, Jen Price, Dr. Gilligan, you know, Jim Mealy has been here longer than me, you know, Pam Lathir at Marcy Bucuzzi, Lorraine Marks, school committee members, I mean, I know Helen mentioned them, but Lori Berzoff, Chris Allen, Stan Limpert, Zora Warren, Brian Gross, David Teresi, Amy Mabley, Holly Vitski, Helen Picard, and the four of us here, or the four of you here. You know, the teachers' leadership with Juliette and Kathy and Bill Brady and Jane Broderick and Ryan Landry and Lisa Raznan, I blanked for a second here, Select Board, FinCon, Town Manager, we do great things because we work together and we have trust and we have confidence in what we're doing, and I'm not going to kind of list out some of the things with Facilities Master Plan 1 and 2 with that, but the other reason I think we really do great things is this is a truly special community, and in good times and bad times, and, you know, we mentioned gas explosion and ice storms and all of those things, people come together and they help each other and they are kind and they are collaborative, and I could not believe the type of community that this is. And I tell the story all the time, but, you know, when Matt, who's now in college, was in kindergarten, Liz said, you know, "I'm going to, I'm going to join the PTO," and I was like, "Oh, my God, how are you going to have time to do this?" And she's, she got the last laugh, I guess. But, you know, she really, you know, I think motivated me in ways that she didn't realize at the time, you know, that it's a community who steps up and helps out, and I can't even believe how lucky I am to have moved to this town for the education for my kids and to see where they are today. And this community that welcomes, it's really a great place. So, thank you very much, it's been a pleasure for 12 years, I'll be watching from the sidelines, and I think I see Ed and Kelly in the back, so good luck, you guys got my vote, just in case you were wondering. Thank you very much, sorry.
Absolutely, thank you. It's been an honor to serve with both of you, and we'll definitely miss you, believe me, I know we will. All right, thank you very much, both of you. So next, we have consent items, minutes from February 15th. If someone would like to make a motion on that.
I want to approve the minutes of February 15th, 2024, as in pocket.
Second.
All right, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Conan?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
And Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, minutes are approved. Next, we have the student representative report, we have with us tonight the great triumvirate of Ben Abbott, Christiana, also known as CC, Christiana Choi, and Harper Barrios, all yours.
Thank you. For those who don't know me, my name is Ben, it's hard to follow all that up, but I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. McDevitt and Ms. Petrowski for combined 14 years of service. It really is service of the town and of the school system. So, the North Andover High School Science Team won their second consecutive league championship of the North Shore Science League last Tuesday in Billrica. Two sophomores, both of them actually on that science team, won the Boston University High School Hackathon, which is kind of just like a computer hacking competition. Those two sophomores were Yash Srivastava and Menhanch Trudhuri. The North Andover High School Math Team competed in their final meet last Thursday, they did very well. And spring sports have begun, they started this week with tryouts and practices. Boys Indoor Track placed second in MVCs and won a third consecutive Division II State Championship, which is really unparalleled across anything at North Andover High School, and the girls' track team did very well as well. Boys Basketball made another very deep run into the Division I playoffs, it's a great source of school pride, I think the games were all attended by probably, I'd say, 800 to 1,000 kids, so it's really excellent to have a team that that's good and that the school can really take pride in. Ramadan began on March 10th and the Muslim Student Association at the high school decorated the main hall to prepare, and seniors are beginning to hear back from schools and committing, I don't know where I'm going yet, so, a lot of people, you know, asking everyone, so I'll know by next meeting, hopefully, but it's an exciting time at the high school, a lot going on.
Good evening. Sorry, I'm so sorry. I just want to start off and say thank you guys for your service and it's been a pleasure being here every week or every other week, and I definitely notice the hard work all of you guys put in and just congratulations on retirement, that's awesome. I'm so sorry. So, okay, thank you. So, last week was Spirit Week at our school. The spirit days were nights care about themselves, nights care about culture, nights care about service, nights care about values, and nights care about each other, which is always a great way to end the week. There was many dress-up days, just to name a few, like pajama day, and students dressed like teachers, teachers dressed like students, that was a really funny one. All week, there was activities for students to do at lunch, student council, we provided a lot of games, we had a coloring table for two days, there was a day where people could put up pledges, there was a map where people could start like where they're from, so it was a very fun and interactive week for all the high school students, and that same week, Wednesday, we had two speakers, we had Ed Garrity, who spoke to the juniors and seniors, and Anthony Sideri, who spoke for the freshmen and sophomores. Anthony Sideri gave a really good, a really great speech about like community and drug use, and Ed Garrity, kind of, he talked a lot about kindness and community, and Ed Garrity did present a workshop to a bunch of the junior and senior leaders in our school, and the workshop really focused about like goal-setting, community, again, and just like, it was really amazing, we were, all three of us were at the workshop, right? And I feel like we gained a lot of, especially as like the upperclassmen in the high school, it definitely feels like it could help build a better community at our school, he did a great job. And on Friday, there was the pep rally, it was super fun, we had the basketball game, we had a few performances, like dance team, winter guard, and Johan, he broke dance in front of the whole school, it was great, he did a great job. And at the end of the pep rally, student council, we gave out ice pops for the great dress-up and overall participation over the week, and so that was our gratitude, like thank you. And also last Friday, there was the Scarlet Night. Congratulations to John McDevitt and Gabby Hardy, who won Scarlet Night. And there was, all the performances were amazing, they were so funny, I thought it was really sweet, and Dancy also performed there too, thank you and sorry for coughing.
Hello, thank you guys again so much for all your service, the love service, it's really great, the commitment you guys have had for our school district. Two weeks ago, the three of us and, sorry, nine other delegates from our school attended the Massachusetts Association of Student Council's conference in Hyannis, and we attended a number of leadership workshops and heard from several keynote speakers with leadership activities to bring back to our school, and I myself ran to be on the state board next year and will serve as a state delegate. The Students of American Thought, two weeks ago, went to DC, I also went on that trip, and we had a lot of fun getting to explore the city and see the Capitol Building and many other museums, we even had the opportunity to see the House of Representatives in action. DECA winners from our high school are Suhas Kari, Manav Patel, Phoebe Arakalian, Kylie Keen, and Grace Koch. And the NIH S. Chapter of the American Cancer Society is hosting their second annual Relay for Life event on Friday, April 12th, in the NOS gym, the theme is Disney. And two NOS projects placed at National History Day Stonem Regional Competition, Ben Abbott, McKenna Dewey, and Patricia Vo and Alex Sirdavin all attended. And then the Drama Guild, several weeks ago, also put on their production of Beauty and the Beast, and all four shows had a good turnout. And then coming up on April 12th, the choir is having a coffee house.
All right, thanks. Ms. Lathir, I have this broke dance, the right past tense of breakdance.
Breakdance, I don't know, breakdance, not sure.
And congratulations, Harper, on being a state rep. Any other comments from the committee?
I just want to thank you for the tickets to see Beauty and the Beast, I know several of us went, it was a great performance. Personally, I brought my mother, who has dementia, and she just sang every song, lots of dementia patients can remember music, even though they can't remember all of the other things, so it was a delightful day for her, so thank you so much.
I just want to echo that, I took my children to the show and they were just entranced the entire show, five and eight-year-olds old, and they just thought it was phenomenal. So, you all did, everybody at the high school, the Drama Guild did a really great job, the whole production crew, such talent and so impressive. I was wondering if we could get an update on the bathroom situation.
We haven't been talking about it as much in the student council, I think we'll probably open up the dialogue again sometime in the coming weeks, I think it's, we're kind of past like that beginning period, so I think some of like the, I don't know, like the bumps kind of were worked out, and it doesn't, we're not going to go back to what it was before just because I personally believe that where it is now is better, and I think some students do, but, you know, it's still being worked on, for sure, it's still a work in progress. I mean, CC, you, Harper, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I think we were talking about having further conversations with some of the administration at the high school about working out more of the kinks that have, or like bumps and stuff that haven't been worked out yet, but we haven't had the opportunity to talk about that student council again.
Thank you.
No, as always, great job, it's the best part of the night, thank you, you guys always do such a great, I'm so, I'm always so amazed at how well-spoken you are and prepared and you share just great things going on and we appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying M.A.S.C., the Mass Association of Student Councils, because I was seeing some field trips and things come through and I'm like, why are they going to the Mass Association of School Committees? You guys threw me for a loop there a couple of times. Thank you, folks.
I have two questions, you don't all have to answer the first one. The first question is, so you went to the The first question is, so you went to the conference. What did you learn that you can bring back? And how can that like sort of shape like the experience that we have with you? Because I love the updates and all the positive things that are happening at the schools, and that's really, really important. But I also really valued the way you brought the bathroom situation to our attention. And I want to see more of that type of work, too. So did you learn anything about how other student reps are interacting with their school committees? And how we might be able to think about how your role changes a little?
So surprisingly, or not, we have a really good like school district. We have an amazing school committee. While as I'm at MASC, I was talking to other people about their bathroom situations and also about how they communicate with their school districts. I found out that we're very fortunate to have you guys who really care and work hard for us. A lot of schools don't have the opportunity, like, they don't have like this right now. And so I didn't really find new ways that we could improve, but just realized that we're very lucky to have what we have. Sorry, that's not very helpful.
Yeah, I think similarly, talking with people, we are fortunate to have us as students, or like be able to have this way of bringing things to your attention. I think it isn't a thing that talking to other people a lot of districts have. With trying to address some of those issues, talking with other councils, talking a lot about like stuff, like asking the student body is a thing that we talked about a lot, and bringing it back to what students feel about it. So that's definitely a thing that we try to incorporate. And I think recently, we've been trying to do more feedback forms and stuff to get more of the student bodies' opinions on things.
Thank you. Ben, you don't have to answer the same question, but I want to know what you did for History Day. You knew it was coming.
Yeah.
History Day this year.
Yeah, so last year's photos from Vietnam, this year it's on the Brendan Rose's strike of Lawrence, 1912. We wanted to kind of take it more local. It's a fascinating topic, and I think this is a special project, for sure.
So you competed at?
This was at Stonemore Regional, so.
So what happens next?
Now we're on to States, and then, but States is very difficult to make a pass. Stonemore is, there's maybe, I think, four teams out of 10, but States is more like two out of 20, so. But we'll see. I think it's a, like I said, it's a special project.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
One thing, and I'll be very quick. We really appreciate you. You guys always bring such a great perspective, and I just wanted to give you a little personal thank you. So, one second. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you again, guys. After hearing about the Beauty and the Beast, I'm really sorry, I was on vacation and couldn't make it. But congratulations on that, and I will promise to make the next one. So thank you for coming, as usual, you're welcome to stay, I'm sure you're not going to, so go get that homework done. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we have the superintendent's report.
Yeah, and first up, we're going to have, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lathrop, the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and she's doing a brief overview tonight. She has a couple of folks with her on overview of the district-wide assessments we do.
Great, thank you. I'd like to invite Kristin Ando and Kara Larkum to join me here. So Kristin, many of you know, she's the Director of Humanities. She's our multi-language, English-language director, and she also oversees the DIBELS administration in our district. Kara Larkum is our STEM Director, and she is the MAP Assessment Coordinator. Also, Ben Cabrera, who is our Math Director, and he also oversees the Calculus Project, helped us work on this project, but he's not able to be with us here tonight. But he's with us in spirit. Andros, this is your last meeting here. You don't need to be quick, and you can ask more than one thing if you'd like to. Tonight, we want to share with you some information about MAP testing and about DIBELS 8, which is what most of you have heard it called, DIBELS 8. We're now referring it to as M-Class. M-Class is powered by DIBELS 8, so the two words are slightly interchangeable. So if you hear it that way, just talk a little bit about that and share some of our data with you. Go to the next slide. So when you think about sort of the triangle, you can sort of look at the bottom going up. We can start the bottom going down. But if we look at the classroom, our classroom and inside our classroom, our students, our teachers are assessing our students by looking at formative assessments and summative assessments, and they're using that to plan and support their learners. And then as you look at the district level, this is where we would introduce MAPNEWA and the DIBELS, or the M-Class. So MAPNEWA, just for anybody who doesn't know, it's Measures of Academic Progress. And we do administer that to students in grades K to 8. And then the DIBELS, or M-Class Powered by DIBELS, is, we upgraded to M-Class in January. It's a new testing tool. It's powered by DIBELS, which is the dynamic indicator of basic early literacy skills. And that is administered to our students K to 5. And that helps us to sort of monitor our learning, to make sure what's happening in the classrooms is what we want to see happening. And then the state has MCAS, as you know, and MCAS is going to verify our learning to make sure that we're all in sync. Go to the next slide. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Kristin, who's going to talk about DIBELS.
As Pam said, we switched over to M-Class, which is the, like, electronic version of DIBELS. Again, just to review, the DIBELS is a universal screener used as a benchmark assessment three times a year. And we also use it for progress monitoring for students who are struggling. It is not a diagnostic tool, is quick. It is a screener, it's been around for about 20 years. And on the next slide, we'll learn what it does and doesn't do. So it identifies students at risk for possible poor reading outcomes. It quickly differentiates between students that need intervention and students that might not. It doesn't diagnose dyslexia, it doesn't identify a disability, and does not act as a substitute for formal evaluation. So that's really important to know. July 1st of this year, all, you can change it, it's okay. July 1st of this year, all schools were required to give a dyslexia screener at least twice a year. We give ours three times a year and notify parents of the results. And so that is something that we just started this year. Here are the multiple components of the DIBELS. We give it currently K to 5, which is exciting. We used to do K to 2. We've expanded all the way to grade 5. And so these are the different subtests that we gave. Each one is about a minute to administer a piece. Whoops. I'm good, Jim, I'm not that good. One other benefit of moving or upgrading to M-Class is that we have instructional reports for teachers, and you'll see a parent report later. But the idea that we can, from our assessment, we can get the data that describes strengths and areas of growth, observe patterns, and teachers can actually like print activities and tasks for students that is aligned to the data that we just collected about them, and so excited about that. Here is the data that we have from fall to winter. Blue representing the fall, winter representing our winter administration. And I just put some of the benchmarks. So this is the composite. Different subtests are weighted differently at different grade levels for students at different ages. And so this is a composite score that will show us K to 5 over the course of this year.
Super fast. Why would we see them going down in the winter?
That's a really good question. Exactly. And so I put the benchmark assessments there. Sometimes we see a dip in the winter because of the change in the benchmark over the course of the winter. So you'll see like, in order to be at minimal risk in the fall, in first grade, you might have to score 330. In the winter, it jumps up to 389. So historically, we've seen a bit of a dip in the winter. Also, because we shifted from the paper-based version of the text to the digital version of the test, I'm not sure what that has to do, especially in first grade, with specifically the phoneme segmentation test, which is actually pretty, I think, for me, my teachers don't think so, but difficult to score. And so we don't know, especially with that test is weighted so heavily in first and second, how that is playing out, too. And so.
So M-Class is on-demand scoring. So the teacher, the person who's administering the M-Class, as they are administering it, they are scoring electronically. And it is a new tool that we are learning.
Was the first administration done by hand this year?
Yes.
Using just the paper?
Correct.
It's a temporary-use paper, in January, we moved to the digital version.
And one further question on that. So when you do the digital version, is someone entering it into the software? Or is it automatically scored from the student's?
It's automatically scored from the teacher's record of what the student is saying. So the student is saying like three different sounds in a nonsense word. The test is trying to isolate, do children know the relationship between the letter and the sound? So there'll be a nonsense word, so that the student has never seen it before, like by sight. There'll be a nonsense word, and the student has to either sound out each letter individually or blend it together. And then the teacher has to record each sound.
Okay, so it is a manual entry? Thank you.
Again, so this is, we've seen Scarborough's reading rope before. There are many strands woven into skilled reading as far as word recognition and language comprehension. And so we've sort of coded a little bit the idea that the DIBELS focus would be more of the skills down towards the bottom of the rope, word recognition, phonological awareness, decoding, sight recognition. And our MAP Assessment, the other assessment Kara's going to talk to you about, would cover some other parts of the reading rope. And so we do both assessments. A lot of people ask, why do you do both? Why you need, because they measure different things.
And before Kara hops into the MAP Assessment, can you just go back to that slide for a second? We are now also, through some of the work we're doing with Hill for Literacy, we're able to take our MCAS scores and our DIBELS scores and put those two scores. The program that they use for us looks at both scores for the students to help us then determine what the individual focus of instruction would be for specific students. So blending those two scores together to get that individual group instruction. And that would be the small-group work that our teachers do with students.
So MAP Assessment, many of you have heard us speak about this a few times. So I'm going to review, though, some of those details. It is, again, a benchmark assessment. We give it in the fall, the winter, and the spring to our students in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. It's an adaptive assessment, so MCAS is considered a mastery assessment. We teach different standards, and at the end of the year, we see whether or not students have met and are able to achieve mastery on those standards. The adaptive assessment changes as students work through the test. So each question they get, if they answer it correct or incorrect, will determine the next question that they're asked in that assessment. The data is norm-referenced, and so they do norm studies every few years. The most recent one was 2020, so we're still comparing the scores to our kind of pre-COVID data. And in 2020, it was based on about 10 million students across the United States. So it's a pretty big pool for a reference point. So that provides us with some comparison to their grade-level peers. There isn't a state normative assessment data, but they do have some linking studies to MCAS data. So they look at MCAS scores and MAP scores and provide us with some information of what kind of predictors would be, where students might land in MCAS. We look at the percentiles of where students are, both in their achievement and then how much they've grown between different testing periods. The 50th percentile is the median, so that's our hope, is that they're scoring in a rank similar to their grade-level peers. But college career readiness benchmark is a 70th percentile. So for ourselves in Northin River, we look at both of those measures to see how students are progressing. Go to the next slide, please. So this shows our reading data for the year, our fall and our winter reading data on the MAP Assessment. And it's showing the average of the student achievement percentile. So you can see across all grades K through 8, all grade levels are above that 50th percentile median, the national norm. And they're reaching, we're getting closer to that 70th percentile. You can see kindergarten, we had some great growth in the winter, that they have an average student achievement percentile of 73 percentile. This shows the growth. So the growth measure, we're really looking at just 50th percentile. We don't look at a 70th percentile. We're looking at 50th percentile is a typical growth for students. The growth does account for where a student starts in the fall and is compared to grade-level peers with a similar amount of weeks of learning. So it takes into account where they start and then where they land in the winter testing period. So again, we can see that we are above 50th percentile for many of our grades. And if you are right at the top of that 40th percentile range, 47th and 48th percentile. This shows our math student achievement, the average for all of our grades. Again, you can see for both the fall and the winter, all of our grade levels had an average student achievement percentile above the 50th. And many of our grade levels are approaching 60th. I think the 62nd and 5th grade is our lowest at the moment of where we are. So many of them are showing great progress towards that 70th percentile college and career readiness as our average. Again, growth, as you can anticipate, seeing those lines before. Our MAP growth for all of our grade levels was above that 50th percentile and many in the 62 and 63rd percentile for an average across our grade levels.
Can I ask, I'm trying to wrap my head around what's meant by growth here. So what does a 50% score indicate?
So it's indicating where a student started and where they, from the fall to the winter. We can pull it at different time points. This is the fall-to-winter growth. And a 50th percentile means that they had typical growth compared to their peers in that national study that they pulled the data, the reference point from.
So 100% growth would mean they were doing twice as much as?
Very significant growth.
Yes, okay.
It's rare. We see some really high, high growth. But 50th is considered kind of a standard of typical growth for students.
Okay, thank you.
We mentioned, this is the first time that we've sent parent reports home. I'm very excited about that as a parent in the district. Again, I kind of have that inside scoop as someone who has access to the data. I kind of have that ability to see where my students are, my children are. I'm really excited to share that information with all families across the district. I definitely have gotten texts from friends, you know, asking questions. The sample family report for MAP is on the left-hand side. Again, DIBELS M-Class provides a similar report for families with a lot of information. We know there's a lot there. We have created some guides in the fall when this information went out that our principals shared out and are on the website. We did a FAQ in the winter, knowing that now we have some additional data points. And again, first time that we're seeing that fall-to-winter comparison by families, which can be a little disheartening when you see, you know, maybe the achievement has gone up and the growth hasn't. One typical thing sometimes is the higher achieving students are, if they're starting off really strong in the fall, then sometimes their growth is not as high. That's a pretty typical trend. It's just harder for them to grow significantly. They can still see that achievement change and a growth in their achievement percentile, but the, sorry, an increase in their achievement percentile, but their growth percentile rank might not change as significantly. So it's really exciting to share that, and we're going to continue to answer questions and facilitate, you know, those conversations. I know our teachers did a great job in the fall. We did do a survey with them after the conferences to find out what questions they were asked to help provide that FAQ and kind of keep monitoring what questions are coming up so we can support our teachers in that use of the data as we've done the last few years, but also in communicating this information and having those conversations with families.
I think Kara mentioned, this is the first year we've sent parent communication home, so that's that parent report in terms of MAP. So this is the first year we're sending it out, and we send it out after each administration. Kara did a really nice video as well that we have sent to families that explains it. Again, the teachers had that for conference time as well, and we have the FQAs. I apologize, we didn't link them, but I did bring some copies of them. They are on the website as well, the FAQ for MAPNEWA for families, as well as the Dyslexia Screener. And then the one on the right from M-Class, that was new to us in January when we moved to the, when we upgraded to M-Class. So we were able to send home a Home Connect letter with every child. So while we have the Dyslexia Screener for K to 3, and if we send that information home, this last time in January, we were able to send home K to 5, this Home Connect letter, which tells them how their student is achieving. It gives them some activities that they can do with their students at home. And both of those have some hot links on there that will link right to the sites if parents are looking for some more information, which is really exciting. And then sort of to go back to your question, Andrew, about sort of the dip in the data a little bit. You know, I think when we talk a little bit later tonight about our Student Opportunity Act, it is something that we are thinking about. We have put some money and we have put time this year into some professional development to really look at the DIBELS and to look at those subtests that Kristin had showed earlier and to help our teachers understand what those subtests are. And then really, that's targeted focus instruction within the classroom. So if you're thinking about a time, lots of our schools call them the wind block, or times that teachers are taking students to small tables where they're pulling the small groups together. So we have really concentrated our professional development the last time we were together. And then we will again, one more time, looking at sort of MTS plans. And then we will again, one more time, looking at sort of MTS plans that Kristin has been overseeing. And then looking at, as I said earlier, we partnered with the Hill for Literacy in our Title I schools. As you know, Title I schools, you can supplement, you can't surplan. So you can supplement the work that's happening there. And we're teaching our schools how to run data meetings, looking at the data in order to inform their instruction.
All right. Can we ask questions?
You may.
You can.
Please.
Just one thing.
No. Many things. It won't, I'm sorry, I love this stuff. Quick question, why, this first one is quick. Why do we choose to use MAP and DIBELS as the, as a test versus, as the assessments versus any of the other ones? What are the advantages of these two particular ones?
I'll also speak to the DIBELS. The DIBELS fulfills the requirement for a dyslexia screener. It's also something that we're familiar with and our teachers have given for a long time. And so it was perfect that the newest version of it was acceptable to the state as a dyslexia screener as well.
So I had to go back to that, that historical perspective. When, when do we pull up, new map was quite a while ago. The, I can't honestly remember when we first brought it in. It was probably about nine years ago and the decision and kind of what we were even looking at. I know we had grade report, which is like a Scantron, very old school, very time consuming. So to get something current, this was what we chose to replace it with. I know I've talked to other districts that use, some use STAR report. There's some different features out there. I think one thing when I talk to different consultants in different groups, we did a study at the middle school with a group as part of an STA study. And I think they, they commented how much data. It's a very, it's a test that has been around a long time. Yes, it's used across the United States, but it's actually a worldwide test. They, I always feel a little reassured when I hear some other folks that are really deep into data speak so highly of it. It does connect with some different programs and the data is very reliable and it's been used by a lot. So at some point, you know, perhaps we'd look into a different tool. I think it's one that we're still getting familiar with. What are those right next steps, as Pam mentioned? You know, how do we really, we're getting really good at giving the assessment. We're getting good at seeing the reports. They're updating the reports. They're actually coming out with a district report next year, which I'm excited about. I don't need to kind of pull from 10 different sources to put it all together. So I think they're making progress and changes. It does provide Spanish speaking assessment for our Spanish speaking students and that's utilized a little bit. One of the, the other accommodations that are provided for our multilingual learners is audio. So it does provide a lot of those resources for trying to access where students are at and get that, that knowledge. I keep asking, when is Portuguese coming? Because I think that again is our, our next largest language. We keep asking everywhere and it doesn't seem like it's large enough across the country yet to make that shift, but we keep asking, so.
Can I just add, Joe? NWBA runs MAP. They've been around for 50 plus years, kind of the gold standard. And, you know, prior to the change in MCAS testing, there was a really strong correlation and predictor of performance. You know, that's a work in progress with the way MCAS has changed in COVID, but they've been around a long time.
And I'm not a fan of STAR.
Good to hear. I hear it has a lot of bells and whistles that people like, but I.
They, they overpromise and underdeliver. Speaking of like our MLs and our multilingual families, how easy has it been to get these things with the graphics and the, to work with the translations? And I know you can probably get like the sample report, they produce those in, in other languages and you can just print that out, but like the individual reports, have we been able to?
Absolutely beautiful. So we, our coaches did some.
And like the things line up?
Yes, our coaches did some small group for parents at some of our schools where parents could come in and go through the test, go through those Home Connect letters with the teachers. And we were able to put them all through the machine. One of the things we have learned about the translate is that if you want it to line up and correctly and aesthetically look the way it originally does, it does better if you run it through the machine as opposed to when we have them as a document and I run it through the, we run it through the software. So the machine has been working better for us, but we're able to do that. The MAP-NIWA does a lot of it for us, I have to say that.
Oh, no.
Oh, not yet.
Nope.
Just the Spanish.
Nope.
Okay.
No, the test, the students can.
Gotcha.
Take it in Spanish, but it doesn't translate. But this time, so in the fall, it was the sample letter. We didn't translate every individual document. And this, having the machine this year, we were in the winter session, we were able to send them all through and translate it in. I hope it was, it translated correctly. It's hard when you see, you know, Vietnamese in different languages and the hope is that we'll get some feedback when it is in translating correctly.
Well, I'm mostly asking for a friend. I was playing with a different product this morning, doing these very reports and the things graphically did not line up well and was.
It looks beautiful. I could show it to.
Which made me sad and we have to do some different work. So thank you for that. And then how, so like I understand how it's useful to get individual reports with, for, for teachers about kids and what to do for small group instruction. Are we building teacher skills to then understand if I have a large group of kids who are struggling with oral reading fluency or their comprehension? Are we giving them the skills to then how they shape their regular tier one instruction to adapt to their, the kids in front of them to like, we know that's going to take a little longer to read this or they're going to struggle in these ways? Are we using, helping them to do that type of work?
Yeah, so both M-Class, the, the program Amplify as well as Hill for Literacy is helping us do that. So M-Class, once all of the data is, is entered in, then we can run reports for each individual classroom teacher. Teacher can run their own reports that has their students in small groups based on the targeted group. So if it's, you know, letter sound identification and then also gives them some activities that they can do. And the same thing for Hill for Literacy, it's called the continuum. And so the data is entered in, that takes into account MAP as well. And then, so what we do during the data teams is we, to look at that data and then the teachers look at their small groups of instruction and then they pick their activities. We have also, we have more PD coming. All of our teachers will be going to an M-Class PD, K to five, coming up in March that Kristin has arranged. And then we have another set of data meetings with the Hill for Literacy. That's, that's moving forward. And that is our hope that as we start to look at that small group instruction with targeted lessons for the specific targeted focus group for students and progress monitor those students, that those scores, we will, you know, our, we want is to see our winter data obviously go up from our fall data.
I'm sorry, two more quick ones. Are we, when we get all this data from MAP and from DIBELS, are we able to disaggregate it into subgroups to look at potential discrepancies between our, with our marginalized students?
Yes. Yep, both programs have the capability within the, the report system.
And are we looking at that at the school and district level to problem solve and address those?
Yes.
Opportunity gaps.
Largely what our some Student Opportunity Act plan is about.
Okay, so we'll get there. And lastly, DIBELS is designed to potentially go up to eighth grade. So are we using it at the middle school? Probably not extensively with everybody, but we know that it can still have a benefit for some kids. Or is it being used with some targeted populations or?
I don't know. At the middle school.
I don't believe so.
Is that something we should be exploring?
With MAP, that's actually.
Probably.
How we kind of started transitioning. So we were using it three through five to replace the grade report. And then special ed teachers actually reached out and said, you know, we would love to have that too. We started with students who are in IEPs first at the middle school and then expanded across the middle school and similar kind of kindergarten.
Because at that age, it's only the ORF and the MAES, I think, that continue up there. And although the MAES is a little longer, it's still useful.
We've added a little bit of special education as, you know, specific things have come up.
And as part of M-Class, we have additional measures that are part of that, part of that. So if a student does not perform well or there are specific areas, we have three additional measures that we can look at that will help us as we are, you know, part of the dyslexia screener as well.
Thank you, sorry.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I have just a couple of quick things. I know there was the, the parents meeting after the M-Class came out at like the different schools. How, were those attended well?
Yeah, we had parents sign up. So we probably had maybe 12 to 15 parents that attended. Parents who signed up that weren't able to attend, we've reached, tried to reach out to them to see if there's information that they need. I know that some schools did it at a PTO event as well. But we will continue to reach out to groups of people. Our two, our literacy coaches also made a video that we can share.
Has there been, been any feedback of, from any families particularly of how, you know, parents are getting home the MAP test and getting home the DIBELS test? And, and they're seeing these scores and how they correlate together. Has there been any explanation to parents on how those correlate together? Because I, I mean, I think the Scarborough's reading rope is really helpful, but I don't think all parents understand that concept maybe or have seen that to where it would come together like that.
The M-Class reports actually do a wonderful job. Like, we'll make it bigger for you, but the idea that like, here's the skill, here's what it would look like, here's how you could practice it at home. So I feel like when we can get those reports to parents, that's the best way to say, you know, this is about, you know, can you hear sounds correctly? This is about, can you decode correctly? This is about, can you read a passage, you know? And so I feel like those M-Class reports were a real step up as far as like being able to communicate to parents exactly what we needed. We're also doing a tremendous amount of work with our teachers in order to be able to feel confident about communicating these results to parents. Because for most, for most parents, the first, the person they're most attached to is the child, like homeroom teacher at this age. And so we're really trying our best to prepare teachers to be able to have these conversations with parents too.
And then last question here is between the MAP and the DIBELS, is there any, I guess, correlation? So say for example, if a child has some great achievement on the MAP test, but then the DIBELS maybe shows that there's a lot of area for improvement yet, is there a correlation? Are you seeing, like, does that happen often? Are our parents understanding how that comes together? I guess it's not one in the same, but sometimes, you know, we're, you're showing that achievement, but then you get the, now needs improvement. So it can get a little bit confusing.
And those, I think one thing I see sometimes too is even classroom grades, right? They might be doing great, getting, you know, A is they're doing really great in that, in that moment assessment and the work that they're doing in the classroom. And maybe there's just, I think that's historically kind of the conversations we've had more is between just how are they doing in class? But we know that, you know, sometimes they have a bad test day. Sometimes things didn't go as well. Or maybe we're seeing, maybe they're not putting in all their best effort during the school day and wow, look at this potential. So having teachers, we've done some work around goal setting and kind of having those conversations with students. I think it's newer, especially the timeframe is different right now between DIBELS and MAP. So we haven't really dove into that yet to see, because it's definitely questions that came up at PD around. So trying to help the teachers understand how, what are they, how are they different? So that we know why a score might be different, but if that's not where that difference lies, what might be contributing to that?
I think what was interesting when we did the data meeting with the teachers, I think some of the teachers were surprised where the students were grouped, that they may not have placed them needing that specific skill. And it's because it pulls the data from both MAP and from DIBELS. And while a student could maybe be comprehending really well, perhaps there is some piece of general reading instruction that they're missing where they would need just to shore up a small group instruction time and then a progress monitoring. So it was, I, I think that's the benefit. I think what we're seeing really is a benefit of teachers looking at these, at these tests and then changing their instruction within their classroom. And really that very, that small group targeted instruction is where we're going to see the benefit or the payoff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what's the overlap again? One, I was trying to write it down, which they covered different ranges, right? One was K to eight, one was K to five.
MAP is K to eight, DIBELS K to five.
Okay.
It's available up to grade eight. We currently use it K to five. We, we did it in fourth and fifth grade for the first time this September.
Okay, so the DIBELS was new to.
New to four, five.
Fourth and fifth, okay. All right, so I see. And so I was just trying to understand like, why would, why, why are we doing two different things? I think I heard most of the answer just now, so I think that's fine. Anyone else? Comments?
Everyone's covered it.
Real quick. Real quick.
So when I look at the, the MAP data for reading and math, on the math, we, the, the growth is over the median for all of them, which is certainly great. Reading, we're below on about half of them. So there's clearly some work to do on that. But I think my question is, looking at this and kind of seeing where we are from the median, we're a distance away from what I guess is being presented as a 70th percentile college and career ready. So for example, if I had, you know, a seventh grader and I'm looking at the reading, you know, we're more than 10 points away from being reading ready for college. So tell me what that means and why, like, like, I guess, I guess that's a question, why?
Yeah, good question. One thing the detailed report would show teachers when they dive into their data is really different subcategories. So much like in DIBELS, there's different areas. So for a teacher, if I'm reading that information and I'm looking to see, it can, again, like Pam was saying, it can really pinpoint what is the area. I'm going to speak to the math side because I don't know the reading side as well, but Kristin can chime in. So for example, one thing we often see with our math scores is geometry tends to be a unit that comes towards the end of the year. So student scores in the mid-year might be lower in the geometry questions that they got than the algebra and operations. So depending on that, that would help provide us some more information of where are those struggles? Where might they not be meeting yet? And then as we progress through the year, I think the idea is that 50th, 50th is a great percentile. That's kind of where a typical percentile of achievement for students. We like to set the bar a little higher. They're, I think the information they provide, I wouldn't say is deep around where they're getting that 70th percentile college career ready. That's a kind of a, a point that they have in one of their norm reference studies that we've tried to utilize to, to look at that. They, they break it into five quintiles of percentage points. So their high is from the 80th to 100th percentile, 99th. I've never seen 100th actually on there. And then you have the 60th, the 80th. So when we're looking at their five quintiles, we kind of have a group that's in, in that middle range that their average really is below that 50th percentile. And so we've kind of scaled it up. It's also what it tends to be is a student in this 70th percentile on their predictor for MCAS tends to be fully meeting and below that tends to be partially meeting. So they might have a few areas that they need improvement on. We don't test at the high school. We tend to see that trend also in our MCAS data that in eighth grade and lower, we have more students falling in the partially meeting than the not meeting. And as we move up to high school, they're really mastering the standards better and we have more students kind of reaching that benchmark, so.
So the explanation on math kind of makes some sense, but it doesn't on reading. And to be perfectly honest, we've seen our students leaving North Annover and going on to two and four-year colleges actually decreasing. And so to see these numbers presented tonight, again, on my last meeting, to be, you know, almost 15 points off of the 70th percentile is a little bit concerning. And it's not that we set the standard high. This is the national average for college and career ready. So it's not like we just arbitrarily picked 70 would be a good number. The median is 50, college ready is 70, and we're at 56. So we've got work to do.
I was going to say, I think the answer lies in what you said, is that we have work to do. And I think that's why we're doing the work. That's why we have invested in the upgrade to M-Class. That's why we have invested in training our staff and our teachers and our administrators on running a data meeting. It's, you know, the work that we're going to be putting into looking at those areas of focus for small groups of students and then what small group instruction looks like during those blocks for teachers, you know? And I think you have to remember that it does take time to see change. You are in, you know, we are in year two of implementation of wit and wisdom. And the work has been done in terms of looking at some of the phonics work in the lower grades, Haggerty and foundations. This year we did a reboot of foundations. So we took all, we brought all of our teachers, even if they've had foundations training before. We wanted, I wanted to make sure that I, I could confidently say that every teacher in this district has been trained in foundations. And so that we, I can confidently, especially being new in this role, you know, move forward. So I think for some of our teachers, it was a, like a, you know, they knew what that information was. But I think for a lot of them, there were lots of things that they heard. You know, the honest truth too is that some of the teachers shared, there were some pieces of like instructional materials that they needed that they were looking for. When teaching foundations, we provided all those things for them. We had them go through the chart after we had the trainer there. We reallocated some of our funds, some of our title funds in order to get those into the hands of the teachers. Our coaches have been working specifically on some of these areas of weakness with our teachers. But you're right, the truth is, we have work to do. But I'd like to say that we are investing in that work. And if you were going to be here another two years, Andrew.
I'll be over there.
I'm gonna invite you back and then you can say how proud you are.
Part of our work in the last year or two has been around shifting away from balanced literacy to more research-based ways that we teach reading. And so again, in two more years, we will have a different picture for you. But we are, you know, making great, great strides to make upheaval in our reading instruction.
So, and just like to echo Mr. McDevitt's point is like, there is a trend from fifth to eighth grade of, of the achievement there, and that's, that's worrisome. And we don't quite, we don't have a wit and wisdom product in the middle school, correct?
We are piloting wisdom in six and seven.
Then we know there's a correlation between the high-quality instructional materials and increasing achievement and shifting the type of instruction we're doing. But I also know that I worry about the, the seventh and eighth graders. What's that experience going to be like for them in high school?
Sorry, went a little over 10 minutes.
I think we're a little bit over time. We'll say that's probably the tribute to Pam and Mr. McDevitt. But I appreciate you folks coming in, I appreciate the work that's taking place. There's nothing more important than, you know, triangulating all these data points, summative and formative assessments, and meeting kids where they're at, so.
Carrie and Kristen are gonna hang around because they're coming back up for Student Opportunity Act.
Well, thank you. All right, so we're still on the superintendent's report. In a second, I want to turn it over to Marcy Bakuzzi to introduce the Urban Collaborative to present tonight. Much like years back, we had the WACHO report come in. It's an opportunity to take a look at, there's a lot to digest, analyze, and there'll be a lot to work through. It'll be multi-year, multi-phase of, you know, implementing recommendations from these folks. And at this time, I turn it over to the Executive Director of Special Education, Ms. Bakuzzi.
Thank you, long time coming. Just, well, I guess for Andrew who was here at the time, this is a conversation that we started having, I started here in July of 2019 after completion of my first year, a conversation about a special education review. We started having those discussions and interviewing different places and to look at our district in terms of some programming and review. Really quickly, right after that, the world shut down and so that process stopped. I am not sad at this point that that process stopped because we are, as we all know, are looking at a very, very different situation than we were in 2021. So the data, I mean, you know, the ever-changing, we're, we're gonna be talking about a lot of data that we passed over in, through November 2023. And so next year, we'll be looking at different data. So it's an ever-changing. I'm just, I'm going to just quickly introduce and I'm gonna hand it over to Lauren. So Lauren Katzman has just a little bit about her with the late Tom hair. And I have to put that in there because for people who don't know, was the former director of the Federal Office of Special Education Programs and one of the most influential leaders in the area of disability rights. Lauren, he have conducted other special education reviews in New York City Public Schools and the District of Columbia for a few. Lauren is an author and served as the Assistant Superintendent for Special Education in Newark, New Jersey Public Schools. She was the Executive Director of Special Education for the New York City Department of Education. She holds a BA in Special and Elementary Education, MS in Special Education, and an Advanced Masters and Doctorate in Administration in Social Policy from Harvard University Graduate School currently. Lauren is the Executive Director of the Urban Collaborative, which is a national network of more than 100 school districts whose leaders are committed to increasing effective and inclusive special education services. Their mission is to improve educational outcomes and life opportunities for children and youth with disabilities. So we're very happy to have them here and hear the work that they've done for our students. And they have some people joining virtually behind the screen.
Behind the screen.
Yeah.
And I know you said you're running late, you want to give us a time amount?
Yeah, whatever, I mean, whatever you need for, I know you have a presentation.
Listen, if we went through it all, we'd be here for two days.
I know you have, you know, at least a 30-minute presentation to get the information out.
Similar, yeah.
30, 30.
30 to 60?
Yeah, that's fine. Take the time you need to present and then, you know, we'll save some time. So we had put in about 90 minutes for you. So take the time you need to present. We're thrilled to have you here, I know you flew in today.
I flew in today. So I'm, but I'm, I'm at 5:15, not 8:15, so I'm a little far away. Thank you all for having us here, to the board, to the superintendent, to the community, CPAC. We are honored to have been doing this work. And we have done, the collaborative's done about 40 of these reviews. The work that I did in Newark and in New York was based on reviews. So I really believe in this work as we are external critical friends. Our goal is to help students, to help you help students. So we work for the students. We do have, we gave you a presentation that's got about 128 slides. We're not going through all 128 slides. But we are going to give you a, an overview of all of the recommendations. And we're going to give you a deep dive into a few, two of the sub-recommendations, show you some of the data and go over, share with you what, what we've given you in terms of resources. We welcome questions throughout, so this, this is for you. You need to know, you need to make this work for you. So if there's something that you do or don't understand, ask if there's something you want to push back on, ask. This is to help you help your district.
Do you prefer questions as we go or questions at the actual?
I prefer questions as we go, but.
Sort of like the school.
Yeah, I can see. Okay?
Please proceed.
So I want to just start before we go into the review by saying a few things. When we talk about special education, we know for all districts, it's about assuring equity for kids with disabilities. And that's what special education started as. It's a, it's a civil, the Section 504 is a civil rights legislation supporting and protecting kids with disabilities. And IDEA, which is special education, is a grant to support this bill. So it's a grant to support the protection of, you know, lack of discrimination for kids with disabilities. And that special education is a service, not a place. And that is the responsibility of the entire school district, not just special education in any school district. Special ed can't fix special ed. It has to be a district. And if special ed is a service to a district, then the district needs to be involved. For North Andover specifically, I just want to give you an overview of some of the things we're gonna say. You have great data, your data looks good. And, but there are stories under that data that are not great. So your overarching data that you submit to the state looks really good. And, but when you start disaggregating, we'll, we'll share some of what we've seen in this disaggregation. The, and we've identified a few areas from that. One thing that might be surprising is that the district talks about MTSS Tier Three is special ed, but it's not. Tier Three is not special ed. It's not according to the state, but it's not according to the practices around the country either. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And then we also want to make sure that we talk about access to the general ed curriculum for all students, whether or not they're in inclusive classrooms, sub-separate classrooms, intellectual disabilities, speech and language. Special ed's about access to the curriculum. And then the last thing is we want to talk about the collaboration between Gen Ed and Special Ed that if done well, helps the whole district. I always say that special ed is the best school reform model you can have, period. Because if everybody works together, all that, like, financial resources, human resources, all of it put together is, it's a win-win. So that's, I just wanted to start off with that. And then I will go into what we've done here. Let me explain, can you see this? All right, you see this slide one over on the right there? That, when you see that on the right, that pertains to the full report. We don't have the full report here. We've pulled things out and put them in different orders. So it's going to be hard for you to follow us because we're not going in order of the full report. The, the beauty of giving your report in a presentation mode or a presentation format is that you can pull things out for your audience, for your time limits, for teaching tools. So we've pulled pieces out, so you can follow along on yours if you want, but know that the, you'll have to follow that slide on the right. And most of them are in red, but where you couldn't see the red, I put it in white. All right? So this is our review. And just in terms of using this document when you get it, everything is hyperlink, so you can go back and forth between things. And again, the joy of a PowerPoint. We will go through this, the review process, how we organize the review. I'll share with you right now that there's three recommendations are based on your strategic plan. Again, if special ed is a service to the district, it has to fit in with the district. So we organized all of our recommendations and observations within those three objectives of equity for all students, consistent in rigorous, rigorous curriculum, targeted P professional practice. Everything's there. We've given you some ideas for next steps. We want to really be careful that these are our ideas. You need to take this and make it what you want. So we've given you some ideas, but those are, our observations and recommendations are, you know, ours, are solid ideas, but our next steps are ways to think about moving forward. And then our rec, our appendix, you'll see, and we're going to go over the recommendations at a glance, I'm going to go over all of them. We've done, we have a whole lot of data analyses and we put together a lot of resources for you like we shared. So just to start, you can see that's slide five, does that make sense? So our goal is to help you build the capacity to support kids with disabilities. That's our goal as a critical friend. And the team that did this, Marcy gave information on me. I will give information on Ruchika, Maura, and Catherine, and Carrie will give information on her. You want to start?
Sure. So I'm Carrie Parker. I've been working with Lauren for maybe 20 years now on these different reviews. My area of expertise is multilingual learners and the intersection of, of language learning and disability. And so a number of the reviews that I've done have actually focused on multilingual learners. I'm a researcher by trade and, and an evaluator as well. And, and so when I participate in these reviews, I often focus on the data and on trying to understand how the, how the data can provide information that complements all of the observations and interviews that have been done. And I, it was great, this is one of the, sometimes I'm only able to do the data. This is one, since I live nearby, I was able to actually be part of the team that visited in November. So it's great to be back here and be able to come full circle.
I will tell you that we all couldn't be here tonight, apologies. But Ruchika Chopra, who you'll see the second picture there, she works with the collaborative now. She used to work in New York City in District 75, which is the special ed district, for lack of a better way of describing it. I won't get into that. But she was in charge of inclusive practices for District 75, moving kids out of District 75 into Gen Ed schools. That was her role. Maura is the Director of Special Education for Newton. Sorry, not the director, I, I always say that about her because I think she's that amazing. But she's elementary school director, she's online with us now. And Catherine Benedict is the Project Manager for the Urban Collaborative. She keeps everything moving. So that's the team that did this work. And our vision, we took from yours, so this is your vision. We just, again, wanted to make sure that we connected with your vision. And again, our thematic drivers is that special ed is about equity and social justice. And when we say district reform, again, special ed is the best district reform model you're gonna get. Do special ed well, everybody rises. Imagine if you can, if you can address the behavioral needs of the kids with the most behavioral issues, everybody benefits. If you can address the reading needs of a kid with dyslexia, everybody benefits. So that's how I think of special ed. What we did here, our process was to, I think we submitted a few proposals because I think it went through a few iterations. And, and so we had our proposal, we started our Phase One in September. So when we started getting our contracts signed and setting up all the interviews and getting the data and getting our documents, and then we had our site visit November 1st and 2nd. And then we also did other virtual interviews through, the last time, I forget, it was like November 16th? So we, we were on our site visit, we did interviews, focus groups, we observed in every single school. We collected student-level data that included grade, race, ethnicity, gender, language, MCAS data, discipline data, special ed flag, disability category, educational environment, which Carrie will go over. And we did a survey that 117 families and 335 staff responded to, which was great. And then we pulled together all of those findings to create what our observations are and our recommendations are. And nothing that's in here is just a one-shot deal. And if there's a recommendation or an observation in here, we saw it over many ways, it was triangulated, which is the correct language. Okay, just to give you some background, I'll turn it over.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna break in with data a few times throughout this presentation. And I'm gonna start by giving an overview, some of the, some of the district-wide data. And so you can see there, slides 23 and 91, if you're looking on your, on your printouts. So this is probably not surprising data to you, the district. What you see is you have North Andover on the left, then Massachusetts and, and national data. North Andover has 21% of its students are identified with disabilities, which is very similar to the state, but both the state and the district are higher than, than the nation. And so it is something that is a, a pattern across the state and something to think about. But it just, interesting, like, to think as a district, what does it mean that our district has 21% identified students with disabilities? So another way that we think about the data is looking at performance. And so these are, this is some overall MCAS performance data. And I just want to say, it was really exciting actually to listen to the presentation previous to ours and to see the ways in which you're using data in instruction and like, you know, and as Lauren said, some of your data look really good. Your processes, the things that you are all working on as a district are, there are some really, really positive things happening. So I just want to put that out there. And what you can see from, from this graph, this is about English Language Arts, the two bars on the left are North Andover, students without disabilities and then students with disabilities. And, and the four bars together are each grade. And so what you can see is that consistently, North Andover's, both students without disabilities and with, with disabilities perform slightly better than the state. That's, which is wonderful. But the gap between students with disabilities and without continues to be very large. And that's why you do these reviews, because that's not acceptable. And so while, while as a district, you're, you're in good shape, you recognize that, that the students with disabilities deserve more.
Question on that?
What should that goal be? Ideally, yeah, parity. Are you gonna get there? I mean, No Child Left Behind was gonna have everybody reading grade a little by third grade, and, and here we are. So I don't know that setting a specific goal like that, I think it's, it's more about looking, looking for growth and looking for closing that, that gap. Yeah, yeah, please jump in.
If special ed were done perfectly, which it never will be, it would be, the whole point of special ed is to level the playing field. And so disability should not get in the way of access. There's, if you look at the group of kids with disabilities, say it's 100%, 85% of that, that group does not have a cognitive disability. So it should be a very small number that's not succeeding, if you look at disability type. And everybody else's special ed should be. And again, this is not North Andover only, this is the state, this is across the country. But ideally, this should be the same. And there's a very small number, a small percent of kids.
Are there model districts that we could look to where that gap has been successfully closed significantly?
Good question. We keep getting asked this question. I can point to models of good practice, but I need to start collecting that. I don't, I can point to, point to models of good practice and I can ask those places to share their data. Yeah, we need to put that together because I get asked that question a lot. And I can talk about places all the time, but not necessarily data.
Can I have a quick question? Sorry.
Go ahead.
How much of this kind of data is shared with the Department of Education? Just as an educator, seeing the inequitable content of the MCAS, I think, does also play a role. And so I'm just curious to see what kind of conversa, if you know of conversations that are happening at the state level.
Well, what I know is that these data are from the state website, so.
Right.
But are the conversations happening?
Yeah.
That, I honestly, I, I don't know. I mean, the question about how good of a measure is the MCAS?
Right.
That is a whole nother question. But, and I would say there's two things. One is you are starting to use some benchmarks. One is you are starting to use some benchmark assessments, which hopefully will give you a different picture. And if in fact that picture looks very different than the MCAS scores, then that is an important data point for you as a district to decide how much weight you want to put on these data.
Sure.
And the second is later on, I'll show you some graduation data, where North Andover looks pretty good in terms of the graduation. And not all districts look good in terms of graduation for their students with disabilities. So whether or not MCAS is the best measure of this is a really important question. And what I think we're seeing is there are more and more ways in which we can start looking at achievement in different ways.
Right.
You know, 10 years ago, this was all we had.
Right. And that's, I just wanted to just kind of put that out there. I mean, just for example, you know, if you're a multilingual learner expert, and I am a multilingual learner teacher, and there's just, there's a huge amount, there's a large amount of inequities on the test, even on how it's administered. Students who are in the country less than three years, and for math can take it in Spanish, but that is the only other language it is offered in, and that feels highly inequitable. And that's another conversation for another day.
I live in an English-only state now.
Right. So I just, I just wanted, I just wanted that out there as like, you know, it's good information to know and to have.
Yes, it is very helpful. And also, in terms of multilingual learners, which is not the topic of this conversation, there are actually some really interesting people doing some policy research around different ways of looking at accountability for multilingual learners to account for exactly that.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
So I think they asked most of what I was going to ask about the gap, except for one thing. One thing I noticed here, at least looking at this, is it's kind of like a U. And there's, we're doing a little bit, a little bit better at the beginning, at grade three, and a little bit better in grade 10. And I'm wondering if there's anything we can draw from that? Any kind of conclusion one could draw from that?
Well, one thing, our colleague, Maura, who works in Newton and so on, knows the MCAS data really well. When we were commenting about the improvements in grade 10, she said that the reality is that the standards for grade 10, in fact, are a little bit lower because they are trying to encourage students to be able to graduate. And so in fact, you see the scores actually look better. So I think.
Then they just increased it, they just increased the.
Did they increase it again?
They just increased the number, yeah.
Okay.
And what I'd say is that, you know, obviously, MCAS is a topic we're seeing discussed statewide. I mean, it's in the paper every day. You know, and it's, you know, I think we've seen, in North Andover, it's not unlike others. You know, the new MCAS that came in, first, we, you know, we stayed with MCAS, and only 19%, 20% of the districts were sticking with MCAS. They went over to Park because they weren't going to be held accountable. And, you know, we've stood with it, and then COVID hit, right? And like, some of the kids hadn't taken the MCAS in three years.
I just want, just to, just to go back on track, I just want to kind of stick with the mindset of what Lauren said around. And I think this is where this information is important, that if we were doing our jobs and leveling the playing field, we would see a more even kind of distribution. So I think in looking at the report and thinking about keeping that sort of theme in mind.
Thank you.
That's where I think is an important piece around that MCAS data.
And so Marcy, you hit, I couldn't have said it better myself. That's where I was heading towards.
Sorry.
Is, you know, it could, we could get distracted with MCAS as a result of this report. You know, at the end of the day, Massachusetts has been ranked the number one state in all these measures, yet, you know, since the new MCAS has come in, half, about half the students statewide don't meet the expectation. They only partially meet, they don't meet it or exceed it. You know, so that's common. And then when you get to high school, you see that bump where kids might be here in eighth grade, and all of a sudden, graduate, that's the graduation rate.
Yep.
And it becomes much more, you know, many more kids participate. And I just don't want that to become a red herring here with the MCAS because that's highly, a highly volatile topic in the Commonwealth right now. And you guys have a lot of information to present tonight.
Yes. And as you consider your next steps and think about how you're going to measure your success, you may decide that looking at the MCAS is not the measure that you want to use, but we highly encourage you to use a measure that will demonstrate closing that gap, if at all possible. So this is mathematics, I don't want to spend too much more time on this. But interestingly, given what the previous presentation said about math, North Andover does do a little bit better mathematics than in ELA, which not all districts do as well, so. But again, the gap is there. Now, one thing Lauren talked about is when, is trying to understand what's happening when you disaggregate some of the data. And as a relatively small district, it's hard in North Andover to be able to look at significant differences within subgroups. And so we wanted to show this slide at the beginning, just to point out that this is a, this is a slide that shows the North Andover students who are eligible for free and reduced lunch by disability status. And so what it shows is that 39% of students with disabilities are eligible for free and reduced-priced lunch, and 21% of students without disabilities. And there is no reason why students who are, who have fewer economic resources should actually have disabilities. And so there, it's something to look at and say, okay, what is happening in our district that is leading to these kinds of discrepancies? And we'll break in, we'll dig into them a little bit more later as well.
And I'll just point out, you know, so free and reduced lunch is something nationwide has been used as a category. We know in Massachusetts that it's free lunch now for everybody, universal.
For the state.
Statewide. In perpetuity, or as long, Jim always says, don't use that word perpetuity. But, you know, we are going forward, free lunch forever. And that's the plan in Massachusetts.
Right, and so these are data from before then, and so, and so you'll have to figure out what data, what data point you want to use and what the state is going to use.
Can I ask a quick question? This is for the district. Did we notice any differences in our elementary schools between, was this the same trend across our different elementary schools? Or is there any elementary school that we have where the, this was different?
We did not look at this data point across elementary schools. But we could, if you want, we can definitely do that.
Also, what, we were looking at a district-wide view, and we were very clear that we're not focusing on people or particular places, just the district as a whole. So people would actually like open up and talk.
No, appreciate that. Do you just have a snapshot, or is this, do you have trends over years?
Here. You know what I'm saying, like this is a snapshot of right now? Do we know how we were a year ago? Do you know how we were two years ago?
We do, we presented in this report, we presented the snapshot of the most recent data. But we do have three years of data. And so if there are specific questions that you have, we can go back and look and look at that.
All right. And we can, I assume we can engage with you after tonight, right? Obviously, there's, yeah, right, okay. All right, that's something I'm personally curious about, right? Because are we moving in the right direction or not?
Right, right, absolutely. And so this, this is a data point, this is looking at the educational environment of students. And this is a calculations that is used in special education to demonstrate levels of inclusion. And so what you see, North Andover is the light blue at the top. And so what you can see when you look at the bottom there, in North Andover, 73% of students with disabilities are in full inclusion, more than 80% of the day in general education. And so that is to be commended. That is higher than the state, it's higher than the nation. It demonstrates a commitment to providing the most inclusive education possible to your students with disabilities. One thing to note from this district-wide data is that there are 7% of students who are in separate schools or in residential facilities. And that number is similar across the state, but it is higher than the nation. And so it's something that might be looked at. Later on, I'm going to break this down a little bit more and look within and see if, that there are certain subgroups of students for whom there are a much smaller percentage are in full inclusion. But as a district as a whole, you look at these data and you say, this is, this is great. We are now ready to think about how, how can we make sure that in those, in those general education classrooms, students with disabilities are getting the targeted instruction that they need to be successful? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lauren to go through the recommendations.
These pictures look so much nicer on a big screen. These are pictures from your district, by the way, so make it.
So we're going to go through the recommendations just as an overview. And then again, we'll go into a deep dive for two of them. Recommendations and SubRECs. And reminder that it's organized by North, by your strategic plan. And, yeah, we actually said all of this already, so about the data. We just wanted to say again, your data is good, but we're digging, we're digging deeper. We'll start here. So objective one, equity for all students is your objective for the district. And then we've broken it down, and 1A is a sub-recommendation. So those are all 1B, 1C. Those are all sub-recommendations of the first recommendation, to create a vision and supporting systems that focus the district on providing equitable access to gen ed curriculums, rigorous academic standards for all North Andover public schools, students with disabilities. So in order to do that, our recommendations are, and again, when we go to a deep dive, we'll give you action steps and supporting data for each of these. Right now, I'm just going to read the recommendations and go over them and the SubRECs just to give the overview of the whole piece. So first, the vision. You have the vision of kids with disabilities included, but not everybody knows it. Because when we talked to people, we didn't hear it. We didn't hear that it was a vision that kids with disabilities were included. We heard special ed, we heard a lot about program. And actually, your data doesn't seem like you have a lot of program, but the talk of special ed was program. And so it wasn't, it wasn't a common understanding that the vision was that kids with disabilities were included and that this was the point. So that wasn't heard. Your MTSS, we talked about that a little while ago. We heard over and over that MTSS Tier 3 is special ed. And again, it's, it can't, it's not. And what MTSS, and I know you know this, I don't mean to be saying things that you don't know, but all tiers are for all students. Special ed should be wound through that, special ed services wound through that. It's not separate tier. And the MTSS model was built on the research that said that no matter who's being taught, no matter what you teach, 85% of the kids are going to get it, and 15 are not. And then you need more. You need like another level of support for another group, and then a deeper level of support, which is your Tier 3 for another group, no matter what you teach, no matter who you teach. That's going to happen. And so this is not about special education, MTSS. It's not about special ed. It's about creating the district you want that gives supports to all students. And that could mean that a student is succeeding and exceeding. Then you want to give them more. So you want to give supports where supports are needed. And again, that's going to be a big, C change, the right words, to make sure that that's understood. And that's also going to kind of force the collaboration of gen ed and special ed, which is a good thing. So MTSS needs to include all, can't be, special is not a tier, it's wound through, it's a service within that. And kids with disabilities can be Tier 1, you know, have, I mean, it should be fluid. So that's the point that we're trying to make with that.
I have a question on that.
Sure.
So from what you saw in our districts, do we, do we, are we offering Tier 3 to students without disability at all?
Yeah, I mean, but this, well, it depends on how you describe Tier 3. I don't know how to answer that correctly, actually. Go ahead.
Not too much.
Okay.
The reality of it is not too much. I mean, so we, I mean, and the conversations that you just heard, you know, part of the previous conversations that we just talked about, and talking about the need for our more robust Tier 2, it's the same conversation about a more robust Tier 3 and what needs to happen in context of a general education. I mean, again, we've talked about before, if we're going to rely any, any point at all on that MCAS data, they've got to be in the classroom. So targeted small groups in Tier 2, if we haven't really mastered that, then the answer to, it's pretty clear that, to me, that Tier 3 is not happening in the classroom to the extent that we would want it to do if Tier 2 wasn't happening, to the extent that we want it to be as well.
Can I just say to Marcy, for Marcy too, like, you know, prior to Marcy's arrival, we, her predecessor had Tier 3 synonymous with special education programming in some of our schools. So like, you know, it was Tier 3, her predecessor would link to like, you know, our TIP program or our Thrive program, things of that nature, so.
And we saw in those self-contained programs, we didn't see gen ed curriculum in there. So it wasn't actually supporting, it wasn't a Tier 3 to support the gen ed curriculum, it was different.
Correct.
Is it, would it be accurate to say that we're not seeing the correct level of special ed support happening in Tier 1 as well? If we're only thinking about it as a thing?
I don't think it's that black and white. I think it just needs to be.
Yeah, it's the growth. I mean, so if you, if you walked into 10 classrooms, you're going to probably see 10 different things happening from 10 different teachers in 10 different classrooms. And I think this, why the review is helpful, and again, it's an interesting connect piece, is that we all need to be doing better and more. So that, to me, that's the overarching theme around it, because is it enough? Is it happening? Yes. Is it happening enough? No.
And Marcy, I appreciate your, missing your forthright, missing your answer previously. I think we sometimes tend to try to explain away the data rather than just confront it and acknowledge it. I do really appreciate that. So thank you.
Let me give you an example of what I think it might look like. So I have this example I use all the time of a ninth grader. This ninth grader is reading at a second grade level, which happens, right? And so that ninth grader is in high school and needs history and ELA and math and everything. And that ninth grader has a ninth grade brain and should get all of those things. But this kid can't decode because he's reading at a second grade level. So he has to have access to all those things, and the special ed teacher and the gen ed teacher can create that. And so when I was a special ed teacher, I created accommodations all the time, books on tape, et cetera. But at the same time, that kid needs to learn how to decode. And so that is a separate specially, they call it specially-designed instruction. So you want access and you want specially-designed instruction.
Would that specially-designed, then would you, would you agree to describe that as Tier 2 or Tier 3? Or is it just a different way to describe it differently? I want to make sure like we use language appropriately.
Call it, yeah. It's, and just so you know, this complication around how to describe this is national also.
Yeah.
I mean, I think for North Andover, we describe specially-designed instruction as special education. So that's, I mean, in over the, over the, at least like the last couple of years with the implementation of new curriculum, like for instance, foundations, like, well, foundations looks a lot like Wilson, and Wilson looks a lot like, so there's a lot of over, we've had the conversation in terms of like, with, like, we bring the coaches into special ed meetings of like, what are we doing differently? Because there is a huge amount, again, not bad, that's where the positive things are happening. We do see a huge amount of overlap between what is happening through the work of some of our coaches and what some of our special education teachers are doing. And it's a conflict when we say, oh, you know, they're getting a lot of, five times 40 of, you know, five times 30 of Tier 2 reading instruction, and then they qualify for special education, and then, you know, it's two times 45. So it's just a lot of like, there's a lot of room for discussion and a lot of room for. But in North Andover, specially-designed instruction is special education.
And I'll say that some of the most powerful special education resource you can have is co-planning. When a gen ed teacher and a special ed teacher plan together, then you've created access, you've created those things. So the places I've seen it done the best is when there's melding between the two, and it's not that clean-cut.
Right, I think you have it somewhere, I think it's in here somehow, you know, really, it looks at a triangle, right? And, you know, the Tier 3 intensive instruction or intervention should really be, it's a much smaller group. You know, because Tier 1 is your universal core instruction, and Tier 2 oftentimes happens within the regular classroom, targeted or strategic.
But you can avoid the need for those other tiers if you're planning together and it's accessible right off the bat. So, but you'll still need, yeah, all of it. It's not clean-cut, none of this, it's messy.
Which is why we've got objective, we've got these recommendations, and you'll see some cross-cutting in the recommendations as well. They don't, they don't stand alone.
Yeah, you're going to see some repetition.
One of the things you're saying here is clearly defined T1, T2, T3, right?
Well, for us.
That's a recommendation for us, right?
Yeah, I mean, you're Tier, you talked about Tier 1 earlier with the literacy. And you talked about the, and then you know what to do. If you've done the DIBELS and you know there's some need for support, then that's your Tier 2. So you need, the tiers, Tier 2 and 3 are like toolkits you need. So it's not like you do this, this, or this. You have a toolkit and figure out what the child needs. And again, you need to define that, but it's not going to be static. And you have the de-cap, which is really good, which would help with accommodations and access. And again, we heard, we saw it, and we think it looks good, but we didn't hear people using it, say. Go on? Okay. So special education, again, what, we want you to define special ed. Again, people talked about special education as a program. So the language needs to change. And language is important. How, what language is used is important. It's symbolic, but it's very important. And then as you're doing all this work, always, continuous improvement tells you, you always need to look at the referral and evaluation process. We're always learning new. And there always needs to be a need to just look at how students are doing to see if they need special education. Because you can have a disability and not get special education. You don't have, you can have a disability and get protections with 504. And we didn't look at your 504, but in most places, 504 is not used well, or not used enough. But you can get protections with 504, and you can get special. But you can get protections with 504 and you can get specially designed instruction with an IEP. And both, in both places, you can have a disability. All right, so going on to E and F, really just bolstered up. You want policies, processes and structures that support this vision and system. So this is kind of just, what is, just morphing what you have into clearer policies and procedures around kids with disabilities. And then again, using data to examine for gaps. And like Carrie said, you're going to need to look beyond some of the quantitative data to see some of your gaps.
Back to, are we going to deep dive into D later? Is that one of the ones you're going to go?
Which one?
Uh, one D.
That was not one that we're deep diving, no.
How do we? I don't know how to phrase the question. How do we do that? Like, how do we like make sure that our referral process is working? Do we have to continue to have outside? People look at what we're doing and like, how do we ensure that we know what we're doing, we're doing it well versus, and not being blinded by our own choices at times?
I don't know that there's an absolute answer for that, but I'll tell you in, with the Urban Collaborative, which is an organization that does this, but it also brings together special ed directors from across the country as a professional learning community. And they are the experts. And just bringing those folks together, everybody learns from one another because they are the experts. I would say you have a lot of folks in Massachusetts who are doing, you know, there's great people here, there's great people there. Pull people together and learn from each other. There's universities here that are doing this work. So I would say, again, not cut and dry, but I would say, reach out to your resources. Pull, have a collective group. I mean, Massachusetts can do that together.
I don't, I think in the, in the deep dive that we're not going to go into today, we do talk about using the discrepancy method for identifying learning disabilities. And, and that in particular is something that, that you could really look at trying to change that. It's, it's an easier, is it, would you say it's an easier or quicker way of identifying? But it, it probably is not identifying the kids that really need to identify with learning disabilities.
It's inappropriate.
It's inappropriate, yeah.
It's inappropriate. Do you guys know what the discrepancy model is?
Can you just say it again?
Yeah. Discrepancy model? All right, the way I describe it is, the discrepancy model says you are, here is, let me put it this way, here is your academic achievement and here is what the IQ score says you should be. So it's based on IQ. And so if there is a gap that doesn't make sense?
We qualify.
We call it a learning disability, which is ridiculous. It's always been ridiculous. And it, and what happens there is it's, it's not, it doesn't clarify anything and it focuses on the IQ test, which is known to be discriminatory. And so it, it definitely has, it overevaluates and underevaluates certain kids. And it also is called the wait to fail model because to have this discrepancy, you need time to get lower. So you can't really get services until you're in third grade because the discrepancy has to be there. You need to have a discrepancy between the two. So it's called the wait to fail model. And the federal government has, says that you are required to allow response to intervention. And response to intervention is actually the precursor to MTSS. It started MTSS. If you look at anything in education, special ed probably started it. But RTI, response to intervention, is also not clear cut.
So I, I think, I thought in the report that was super helpful for us, but the, the work that needs to be done, again, about that previous conversation, needs to be in place for us to, for us as a district to feel more confident about having a non-discrepancy model because the, and families would, are going to need to feel more confident that we have those things in place. Otherwise, we're going to continue to qualify students based on discrepancy model.
Are we currently using or mostly relying on a discrepancy model?
We're using it a lot, yeah. I mean, that's, again, this is not, it's not a North Andover thing. It's, I think it's a, you know, it's a easy explanation for a challenging situation as opposed to having processes. And it's also when you're the, when you're the only game in town, when special education is the only game in town, it's a way to help students to be qualified for special education if there's not appropriate Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three supports. So that's, you know.
So then the goal would be to move away from that, but if we, to move away from that, we have to have these other things in place, otherwise?
But you're starting with the dyslexia screening.
Correct, yeah.
Because if you look at the group of learning, there are discrepancy models about learning disabilities. And if you look at the group of learning, kids classified as learned disabled, it's usually the largest category from kids classified at all. But if you take that one group of kids classified as LD, eighty-something percent of that group has reading as their issue. So if you focus on this dyslexia screening and work and foundations and Wilson and everything else you're doing, you'll get better results with the response to intervention. The idea is, are you intervening? How are they responding? Are you intervening? How are you responding? So the point is, no matter if you can classify or not, just teach. Teach, teach, teach.
But we have to improve our, how we intervene.
Correct. But you're also improving your, your literacy, which is the first thing you do.
Thank you.
All right, okay, we're on to two. Good? Keep going? It's only six o'clock for me. All right. So two is the, looking at consistent and rigorous curriculum. So we want you to create equitable opportunities for North Andover public school students with disabilities to receive and be successful with the district's gen ed curriculum's rigorous academic standards. And again, we want everybody to be accessing the general education curriculum, no matter how significant your disability is. Now that doesn't, I mean, you, like you have a child who maybe can't decode and has intellectual disability, doesn't mean that they can't, you know, enjoy literature being read to them or something. I mean, you want, you want to focus on high academic standards for everybody. And you guys started Universal Design for Learning, which is the way to do this. This is the, the magic bullet is, is UDL. And UDL, done well, gives you a lot of tools to meet a lot of students' needs. Yeah, I don't need to say anything about UDL, right? Okay. And then specially designed instruction, you want to develop your specially designed instruction. So you want to start learning it. Again, it's fluid. It's going to, I mean, what's good today? Like when I started teaching, we never thought kids with autism could read. I never even tried. And that's horrible. It's horrifying now to think of that. So you want to, it's always changing. It's always changing. It's always improving. But you want to figure out what the specially designed instruction is. That ninth grader I'm talking about, who's reading at a second grade level, maybe he gets Wilson, that's specially designed instruction for him. And you want students, again, to be in the least restrictive environment, but you want those services in the gen ed class as much as possible. And that could mean that the teachers collaborate and plan together. And I want to be really purposeful in putting planning before co-teaching. You want to plan. Planning is more important than two people being in a class. Right? And so you want this, you know, in best of circumstances, if we had, you know, all the money in the world and all the resources, you'd have two, three, four adults in every class, but you can't. And it's not necessary if you've planned together. Planning is the, is the, is the key. And then?
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
So one of the things that I think a lot of people in our community get upset about is professional development that we have like every other Wednesday, right? Which is part of that. And they, they, it's challenging for families, right? I mean, like especially when you've got, you know, younger kids. I think we also need to do a better job of highlighting what that is to our families so that they understand the collaboration and the, and the PD that's taking place there. Because that, I mean, what you just said makes a ton of sense. And I'm just thinking back and I, you know, I hear a lot of things from people who are like, okay, so my kid just got out an hour and a half early today.
What are they doing?
What are they doing? Exactly, right? Like, I hope they had a good lunch.
And we do nothing over the summer, right?
Yeah, like, yeah, of course, right? Which we, we all know is not the case. But really kind of, you know, highlighting how that work kind of gets done and how it fits into this, I think is going to be a really nice thing.
Look at other countries. The countries that outperform us don't have as much classroom time as we do. There's more planning time.
How much actual co-teaching do we have in the district versus a teacher with, with an assistant helping out? And even sometimes when you have a special ed teacher, I've, I've experienced this myself, you have a teacher with a special ed teacher as an assistant in the classroom, which is silly and wasteful. But like, do we have good co-teaching happening or do we need to expand that?
So it's, I mean, there's more code, actual, like, real co-teaching because of the planning time. I would say there's, there's the most happening at middle school because they have the most co-planning opportunities at middle school. And high school has co-taught classes. So by virtue, there's always, you know, that, those are co-taught classes. So what happens more at middle school and high school than it does at the elementary school. The elementary school is more of a traditional, I mean, I've, since I've been here, I've like gone are the days that it's, it is only like a, a teaching, like there's always should be a special education teacher in that mix of like a five times forty-five B grid service. But for, but it's not a true co-teaching model because of some inconsistent planning times and mostly because of the inconsistent co-planning.
Thank you.
Speaking of professional development, so your professional practice objective, and so we said you should create targeted professional practices that support improving the effectiveness of special ed supports and services. And I say supports and services, you know, you want supports and services both. For North Andover public school students with disabilities to receive and be successful with the district's rigorous academic standards. And collaboration, 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 collaboration. That's, that's the, you know, UDL, collaboration, those are, there's some, like, there are some things that are key. Collaboration is big. Let the special ed, gen ed, related service providers work together. It's mind-boggling. It's, it's really hard in the beginning though, I will tell you that. You know, there's a lot of turf wars, there's a lot of confusion, there's, and oftentimes special ed teachers look like paras in the planning process, but there needs to be some help in helping folks figure out how to collaborate. And that's possible. And the people, I've had the hardest time convincing to do this end up being the biggest advocates of it. Because once you do it, once you get, once you understand what that feels like and how successful it can be, you don't ever want to go back. You're shaking your head?
I've just, I've been in, I've been a support teacher in a classroom and, and it just, if you don't have the time to collaborate, it is a check the box program. And, but I also have been in classrooms where we have had planned time together and it's magic.
It is. I've had the same experience where my own classroom, I've had a support staff and it was horrible because we didn't, just weren't given the time to do the work. And then when me and a special educator were given time to sit down and plan out the lesson and we were both equal, it was lovely.
And I think it's just, you know, it's, it's the, it's the nature of, of the industry. There's not enough hours in the day and, you know, teachers are just stressed to get their, you know, their plans ready and just everybody's just going in a million different directions. It's not like a, it's not that people aren't willing. It's just, how do we, how do we reconstruct things so that it is the focus so that the teachers who are supposed to be working together have that time to collaborate? Because it doesn't work if you just put a teacher in a classroom. They have to have time together.
And I think I said to Lauren, and I know I've, I might have said it, if I didn't, I've said it before in this, in this forum, that this district does a really good job and we're super thankful that special education is always at the table when we're talking about general education initiatives, planning, implementation of new curriculum, training of new curriculum. But, but we've done that a lot over the years and very few times, and again, it's not, it's, it's not a fault situation, it's just the reality of it is that general education isn't necessarily at the table for special education initiatives, discussions, things like that. So it's just, I mean, we have a rigorous professional development schedule unlike any district around it. It is a lot around, again, in special, special education and general education collaborate during those times, but it's about a general education curriculum. So I, I'll stop talking of this, but we say all the time, and I've had this conversation, like in special education, you used to always say, like, you didn't have to be a content expert because that wasn't part of your job. You were, you weren't a content expert. Implementation of these new curriculums, it's a little different. You know, there, there is an expectation that you are somewhat of a content expert. So they have to be at the table for that and we're grateful to be at the table for that, but it's, you know, it leads for, it, we're missing time for other things too. So it's a balance.
The next one is about staffing. And people always ask us for caseload numbers, what's the appropriate? And we don't give that because it really depends on what you want to do. How, you staff for what you want to do. Right now, I think you staff per student. And I would think about that because that kind of, and, and Massachusetts grid system really promotes this, which I don't like Massachusetts grid system for special ed services. And I think the new IEP still has that. But it doesn't allow for enough flexibility, in my opinion. Or you have to play with it too much to create the flexibility. You can do it, but anyway, so it supports this staffing by number, by point, by a time, by periods, by this and that. So we say, figure out how you want your services to look. What's your vision? Staff for that. We do talk about the fact that you have a large number of teaching assistants. And they may be the most wonderful humans and the most talented people you have, but they are also by definition the least qualified. And they are working with the most complex kids. And so you want to steer away, the, the research is really pretty clear that it doesn't work well to pair teaching assistants with kids with disabilities. One-to-ones research is extremely clear, it's not good unless there's an absolute need. Like the need I'm talking about is a, a student who had brittle bone syndrome. And if a ball hit that kid, he'd die. That's a need. But to, you know, for, for reading or for even a communication board, there's, there's not always a need for a one-on-one. And paras and teaching assistants, again, great humans. You don't want to connect them with individual kids. And my mentor, Tom Hare, used to always say, you Velcro a parrot to a kid and call it inclusion. And it's not. And so it also, it, when you have that teaching assistant with the kid, it just, the gen ed teacher doesn't have to change. The kid is separated and it's just not a good system. So again, these may be the most wonderful staff you have in the district, but just not knowing any person at all, just by definition, you're talking about the least qualified people working with the most complex kids.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Then how should it? What would be, how, how could it look there that would be better?
So a few things. You want?
Well, and you gave some, I mean, I appreciated there was a food for thought kind of aspect in the presentation too, which we will be thinking about.
So the food for thought is, there's a rule of thumb that the cost, and this is just cost, and you're not doing any of this work because of cost, okay? This is because of what's good for kids. But looking just at the cost, the cost of three paras usually equals a teacher. And so if you can play with that some, you might get more teachers, which would give more time for planning, et cetera. You want to attach teaching assistants to classes, not to particular kids. Those are the two big things, I would say. And then also, the teaching assistant should be doing what a teacher asked them to do, not on their own teaching. They should be an extension of, again, not knowing any human, you might have better paras or teaching assistants than teach, I don't know. But by definition, they should be doing, they should be an extension of the teacher. Sometimes just even taking away some of that paperwork so the teacher can, you know, spend more time planning or teaching. Does that help?
Yeah. Thank you.
And then again, professional learning, everything we've talked about in here should have professional learning attached to it. Because nothing's that simple. You always want professional learning over and all, all the time, continuous learning. You always have, you'll have new people, you have bigger ideas, but you always want professional learning. And like Marcy said, you want professional learning that everybody's involved in. If special ed is a service to the district, then gen ed needs to know about that service and what that means. If you're collaborating, then the two need to go together. I mean, if you're teaching math, that special ed teacher maybe doesn't, doesn't need to know, I mean, can and won't know as much as the person who is a math teacher. and won't know as much as the person who is a math teacher. Like, as a special ed teacher, I would not know as much as a math teacher. But that math teacher and I can sit together and I can learn and I can teach as, I can teach as well as that math teacher because we planned. And I come as a special educator with pedagogy. I know how to get access. I can, I can take, you know, whatever and help that teacher create access and then I need to learn the math. And it's a, anyway, you all, you need that professional learning together in order to do that. Okay, those are overarching. So what we're going to do now, depending on how you want us to proceed, we were going to go into two of them with a little more depth, then go to the data, then go to the resources. How do you want us to proceed?
Please proceed.
All right. So we were going to go into the MTSS one, just a little bit, and then the LRE one. And so with the MTSS, you saw, this is the recommendation, sub-recommendation that we shared with you. And then we've given you some action steps to get there and some supporting data on why we said what we said. So, so the action steps to move your MTSS, we think this is a bigger deal than, I'm, I think this is going to be a big deal. Because you're moving the district thinking. It's hard to move a district thinking. You know, you can move skills, but you're asking a district to rethink how they think about MTSS, rethink how they think about special education. And so you want everybody to look at what's out there right now. Are kids with disabilities in the MTSS, you know, in what you've developed? Sit down and look at what you've done already and make those changes if you need to. Figure out how you communicate this with people. You don't want people to think they've done anything wrong or bad. They just need to, like, we're evolving in this way, but it needs to be a communication plan so people are on the same page. You know, a lot of this work is skill, a lot of it is just perception and understanding of what you need to do. You need the student assistant team to understand that they can look at multiple sources of data, not just the discrepancy model, et cetera. Look at all sorts of data in order to decide if somebody needs to be evaluated for a disability and get special education services. UDL, district-wide. And again, that's a, that's a big change, but it's, once people start using UDL, it's so wonderful because it's clear. I mean, there's three places, three areas, plan with these three areas in mind, done. I know it's not that simple, but I'm just saying, it's, the structure is that simple. Done.
And we mean from the littles to the seniors? Like, it's not, we're not talking just about, like, designing instruction with UDL for the elementary kid.
I use UDL at university. I use it with doc students.
Yep.
And I, all I can say, as, you know, just to say something exciting, and I, it hasn't trickled down to the extent that we would want it to trickle down, but these are all things that as a group and including Kristin and Cara and myself and Pam, these are all things that we talk about and plan for a lot. So, you know, there is.
It's a primary focus in the principal arc that we're doing this year. I think that's one of the things that was in superintendent schools that he talked to you about. We meet with principals every other week and this is the exact conversations that we're having. This is the work, this is like our PLC that we're doing with the principals. I think wit and wisdom lends itself to this. This is what wit and wisdom talks about, that all students should be included in tier one instruction, have access to that. We did an activity with our principals where we identified specific students, they, you know, who were either underperforming, you know, not hitting their, their, their goals or perhaps maybe were marginalized students. And we had them identify ten students and they had to follow those students throughout the day and see what, where they were. So why weren't they in the wit and wisdom lesson? So where were they when wit and wisdom was going on at that time? And that's just one of the activities that we've been doing with them as well, you know, through that principal arc. So, you know, it's, I think what's hard sometimes is when a, like, a review is going on. I think the district already had recognized some of this, so some of this work is, is already happening. And I think you recognize that through some of the presentation you heard a little bit tonight. You know, when I thought about the M class and the data team meetings and how we're teaching data team meetings, we were really thoughtful to make sure all special ed teachers, all ML teachers, all reading teachers were part of that, sitting with the general classroom teachers. So then when they pulled those kids into the small groups, then they looked at what activities they're going to do together. But it also reminded me of the year that we came back after COVID, where we didn't start school until like much later in the year. And it was probably one of the better things that came out of COVID because that, and I think Andrew, you made the point, that is what we really need, is that professional development time to get those teachers together to do that planning. But if you think about that year, we were really able to be thoughtful about the planning to be able to come into that COVID year.
My wondering, Pam, is I love that we're talking about this and thinking about it and you're talking about this and thinking about it and working with the principals on these things. And like, yes, eventually it gets down. But I also wonder a lot, like, what is the impetus and the drive for individual teachers? If not giving the time to better plan to, to really use EDL? Like, how do we, how do we get that to be, I'm wondering, like, what's the process to get that to be a reality in the classroom and not something we talk about in our meetings, but that our kids experience each day? Like, and that's, that's a challenge for everyone, it's like, how do we then shift teaching practice? And that's a challenge.
We are shifting that practice through the implementation teams that we have set up, that through the teams that Kristin has set up with wit and wisdom. Those are, that is the work that, that we're doing. That's when we have those PD days and those team leaders are teaching. Cara is going to talk a little bit about the deeper learning grant that we have. And that really is sort of, while we're focusing on middle and high school with our deeper learning grant, the kaleidoscope through DESI, it is, that sort of is going to be our umbrella and looking at UDL for all of the district.
And I'd say, you know, we have to capitalize on the structures we have. We have really good structures comparatively to most districts in terms of early release and also collaboration time built in within the school day in the schedule. And so how do we make that time sacred? Because we have grade level teams meeting, maybe general education, but how do we include an EL teacher? How do we include the special educator? Because it's the work we're doing and we know that, like, it can't, yeah, when we take ownership altogether of our students and don't, it's not an EL teacher's problem or a special education, you know, that's why you see the high push in. We know that that's where the success is going to come.
Yeah, and just really giving credit to, to teachers, like, there are incredible, there's an incredible teaching staff here in North Andover. I've only been here for a short amount of time, but there isn't one group of people that I've worked with or met that haven't really wanted to see kids succeed. And I think sometimes that's why we have that attachment of the, too many TAs or IAs in the classrooms. Because it is out of that great concern for students to, to succeed. And people want to do the work. So it's that, you know, the fact that people are willing to come to the table and they already want to do the work speaks volumes to the group of people, but it also sort of, to me, puts us already in a really good advantage now of sort of just building their capacity or building their toolkit, as I think you've already said.
And I love everything that everybody just said. I just want to say, one thing we did hear from special educators is that they didn't have the time to go to some of those meetings. They were invited, but they literally didn't have the time.
Right, and we are, that's what I mean, where it's kind of hard when you're doing the review and we're sort of into this new because we are trying to make the time. Now, does it work perfectly? No, it doesn't. Because the reality is they do have lots of other things that are on their plate, but we are working. Marcy and I have really made a commitment to work together this year. We go out and do observations together if somebody calls us and there is a concern. We bring in the directors if we need them, we bring in the coaches if we need them.
I think you guys know, so things like, things that come up. So, great, we're going to be doing new math implementation, but oh yeah, there's a new IEP process coming up. So the next four that you're supposed to be there, now you have to be here. So there's always the, you know.
And we look for that balance. I mean, we're cognizant of, you know, we've implemented wit and wisdom. You know, we're looking at our Eureka Math Program now, what may be next. We have a new IEP, so there's always something coming. And, you know, we've really got to focus on doing something well with implementation and the science of implementation because.
And we have to choose our next steps carefully.
Very carefully.
Yeah, so it sounds like the, the intent is there, but like Marcy said, we could be, we could be doing better. And that's what we're working for.
Containment improvement.
And the intent is not in every district, I will say that. That also, I'm just finishing up a study I did on special ed directors across the country. Number one thing, I'm always putting out fires, all day long, every day. That's because they get pulled everywhere and can't get to the proactive work. So it's good that there's work on getting to the proactive work. All right, moving along. So the D cap, you have a D cap, it's really good, use it. I mean, it's not, you know, it's, it's a, it's a guide to start people thinking. But again, the D cap could be used within UDL. I mean, those are some ideas that could be used within UDL. So it's another tool to help move UDL. And again, professional learning opportunities to, to move this work along. All right, so the, what we found and the reason we could say that is we found that tier one, as you described, your literacy is your strength in what you're doing. Tier two, as we said, is not well-defined. And tier three is special education. So that's one thing that we found to support what we're saying. This is just the supporting data. With your literacy, you have done, like you shared, and I don't need to go over this again, you've done a lot of work with literacy. You have a lot of tools with literacy. That's great. There's a, but I know you're forming them now. When we were here, it felt like people were like, I got this, I got that, I got this. But now it seems like it's being more formed and the screening is also good, so those are good. These are all so good. Literacy is your strength. I mean, if, in our opinion, what we saw in terms of looking at the MTSS model, we saw literacy as a strength. You do the progress monitoring, you were talking about DIBELS and M class. And we talked about UDL and the D cap, so this is more supporting data. Oh, okay, so that's your supporting data for MTSS, that's why we said what we said. That's not fact, it's more of the ideas that we saw. I'm going to let Carrie go to the next one.
Okay, great, thanks. I did just want to say one thing that I think you sort of skipped over around MTSS and implementing wit and wisdom. Pam, when you talked about, like, trying to figure out who are the students that are actually out of the classroom when wit and wisdom is happening? That was, that's one of the things about really figuring out how to get tier one, tier two, tier three in the general education classroom. So that's, so that's exactly the kind of thing that we're talking about, that you're, that you're working on. So I was going to shift into least restrictive environment. So are we ready to move to the second deep dive? Okay, great. And so, so the, the recommendation there is to continue to develop, to define and develop effective, inclusive special education supports and services that are designed to provide access to the general education and specially-designed instruction in the least restrictive environment. And so we, we looked at some specific action steps that you can take, not so much to change the, the, the least restrictive environment that you have set up, the inclusive practices that you already have, but what's actually happening in, in the classroom. And so I'm going to let Lauren actually talk about the action steps and then I'll look at some of the data.
And so you can see, you can see at the first one, it says C3A, there's, like we said earlier, there's a lot of connection. So that collaborative work we were talking about, co-planning to co-serv, to co-learn, that's the mantra that's being used out there, like, you co-plan, you co-own, you co-teach. So just the mindset of planning and why you're planning and that everybody owns all students. And we put in there just the, the ICS, they're just, they, they're a company that does this. We're not trying to promote companies, we're just giving you, they have a lot of resources that they use and they're the ones who kind of came up with this language, although the idea's been around, but they've kind of pulled it together. So we also want you to review your current service models to see what you're doing that you're pulling a kid out for that could be done in the gen ed class. So, and when you're pulling a kid out for something like that ninth grader reading on a second grade level, you don't want to pull that kid out for math or for, you know, history. Just because he's reading on a second grade level, he still gets ninth grade history. And so a rule of thumb that I've had is you pull out for a skill that's not grade level when that other group is doing that skill. You don't pull out for ideas, you don't pull out for things that you need to learn and, big ideas. You don't pull out for comprehension, you pull out for skill.
Is that something that you would recommend be done on a regular basis? That review of the models, because I feel like that would almost be a fluid thing as well, based on the needs of students.
Well, that's also, there's, think about the I in IEP. It's individualized, so, I mean, models maybe not even be the right word. So you want to give every student what they need. And it may be five different kids, five different models. So I think, and the IEP process asks you to review it no less than once a year. You can review it every day if you want, but you can't review it any less than once a year. So, yes, it should be a continual process with every single student with the goal of, they don't need special ed anymore. You know, because you can have kids get off of IEPs. I'm, I'm working with districts, asking them for their exit data, I don't have any. Because a student who has, you know, who has the skill to support themselves or just needs some protections under 504, they don't need special ed anymore. That's fine. And you've got, you know, anyway, I'll keep going. So, and so also, this is a big one, the kids who are educated in sub-separate, they need to be academically focused. And when they're included, let's move away from that model of including them in specials, art, music and gym. It's the most, most peer pressured classes that we're putting kids in who are in self-contained classes. It's a setup. And it's not, it's not helping their skill. So you want kids in the gen ed class as much as possible. And by law, the gen ed class is their assumed placement and anything else must be justified. You never have to justify putting a kid in a gen ed class. Kids should not have to earn their way, kids with intellectual disabilities, kids in sub-separate should not have to earn their way because they've done better, they've gotten the skill. It's the environment that needs to figure out how to work with them.
And one thing I'll note around that, in looking at the data of the alt MCAS, again, going back to MCAS, but the students who take the alt MCAS, it, it was really, it was hard to parse it out totally, but it looked to me like there are some students who are in substantially separate classrooms who take the regular MCAS. It did not look like all students in those separate classrooms are taking the alt MCAS. So then the question is, how are those students getting access to the, to the regular curriculum if they're being asked to perform on the regular MCAS? And so those numbers are small, so that's the kind of thing where you can dig deep into the data and really look and say, who are our students, what's happening with each of them? And are there things that we could do differently? Should these students actually not be in the sub-separate classroom? Should they actually be somewhere else and have some, some pullout for, for specific skills? So it was just that, that was one of those things that I couldn't quite get at, but was, I think is worth looking at deeper.
When I was, when MCAS came, first came out, I was doing my dissertation. My dissertation was asking kids in high school their experiences with the MCAS, kids with disabilities. And I thought I'd hear all this stuff about, oh, you know, test-taking is hard and, oh my God. All they said was, teach us, just teach us. You give us geometry on the MCAS and you don't teach us geometry, what do you expect? And so they just want to, I mean, kids, they had no problem with the test. I have a problem with the test. They had no problem with the test. They just said, teach us, we want to succeed and you're not teaching us. And so, yeah, and so what are the, so those kids in sub-separate classrooms, I can't imagine that they're passing, doing well on the MCAS because they're not getting access to the gen ed curriculum. And then again, oh no, is this still me? Yeah. And then again, looking at the staffing, again, connected to what we said earlier. Look at the staffing, how are you staffing to meet the vision that you want? Use your IEPs differently. Use, I mean, IEPs should be the end result of a lot of thought and recur, and to be fluid. You need to, like, when a, when a kid needs something different, you shift the IEP with the whole team. But there needs to be help to IEP teams because the IEP team officially makes these decisions. Like, one person can't go around making all these decisions. The IEP team needs support in how to make those decisions on what's appropriate, when and where and how. And that's, that's hard. That's, that's a lot of learning. And it's a lot of pressure because people feel the law, they're going to get in trouble, compliance and.
I don't think they want to help.
They want to help, yes. And so give them some, give them some tools and some space, some tools and some space to not do it well all the time, just like, figure it out. It's, it's a, it's a big learning curve. And yet always, and let me, let me repeat what you just said, always it's the help. It's, I mean, I, I don't meet people who are mean, horrible humans teaching. I meet people who are frustrated and want to help and don't know what to do or are feeling like their thirty-year career is being attacked because it's changing, so.
On the subject of the IEP team and people feeling like they're ready to participate and have the tools at their side and they're able to make, help make those decisions as a team, do we have any evidence or any data about parents' ability to participate in those as a member of the team and not just as a spectator? as a member of the team and not just as a spectator?
Do we have it in the data that we looked at? No, can I tell you about a big picture? Yes. I, basically, it's perception, again. Treat the parents as full members. And there's gotta be a way to do that. I, the most effective way I have found to do that is student-centered IEPs when middle school on, the kids run the IEP meetings. The kids organize it. Or, when I was teaching, and I've seen this in a bunch of places, the kids in the IEP meeting, then every adult talks differently. They think differently. What do you need to get support? How can I help you? What, you know? And they stop, the, we, special educators, we can talk in acronyms all day, and nobody knows what we're talking about. And so a lot of these, these IEP meetings are full of acronyms and, I mean, I, oh god, I was, I'm, I'm watching this movie that gives me chills about this family in New York City, and it's not New York specific, who in an IEP meeting, this, they were trying to push the family to doing something, they showed them a bell curve and said, your kid's not even on this. I mean, like, the stuff that people are so, there's so much confusion. There's so much confusion on how to do this well. I think it's perception mainly, like, everybody is a full member. A parent is a full member. Give them the tools. I used to give parents books to read, and let's have, talk about it. This is what we're saying. So I think maybe focusing on the student in this IEP meeting. So a kid would understand it, and a family would understand it, and asking for their advice. Asking for their input, real input. Asking if they understand everything that we're talking about. Asking what else they want.
I think what's challenging sometimes, and I've experienced this, and I'm, I'm an educator, and I work in the field, is that even at my own son's IEP meeting, I don't even know all the different choices that, things I could advocate for. Like, so I'm, I'm, I'm at a disadvantage in terms of, like, I don't even know the things that could be available, that could be suggested. Even if I am treated and seen as the same, like, I still have that, that, absence of that, that knowledge gap. And that's, I think, at times, really frustrating too. And then you're automatically, even if you're seen, you're like, you feel like you're still a spectator. And I wanna know, like, what we can do to, to change that, to make your parents more empowered to participate at, at the table. Not just as advocates and asking for what's good, but for, in, in other roles, in terms of making the choices. And that's, I think that's a hard thing to do.
When I was running parent meetings, a lot of it was about what your rights were and what you, what you could ask for. And, you know, what you, you know, teaching the families, what they have. Families have more rights than almost anybody in the IEP process. And, but they don't know it. And it's, it actually takes the onus off of educators, in a way, too much in my opinion. But, yeah, it's, it's relationships. I did this study of what used to be the best inclusive school in the country, which is in Boston, but it's not right now. It fell apart, very sad. But I did a, a year-long study of that school. And the principal, the current, the principal who created this amazing inclusive environment with families included, and he said, Lauren, you're gonna bring all these fancy tools to study for a year and blah, 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 blah. And I'm gonna tell you, it comes down to one thing, relationships. And he said, build relationships. Everybody's at the table building relationships. And he said, that was, that was the only thing that he knew was the bottom line of what made his school work. That's such a sad story with this school, right? And the other thing is to, to use this new IEP system to your advantage cause that's, that's another way to, there's a lot of training that has to do with it. Train the families on it, as much as you can.
I think the new IEP is, they're, they're trying to make it more student-centered. From what my understanding is, we just had a little training on it, and it seemed like that's the goal. It's not perfect, but it was more student-centered, which is nice to see.
Okay, so I, okay, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about thinking, digging into the, the least restrictive environment and understanding what's, what's happening with different students. So these, this first slide talks about stuff that I already talked about. Oops, what did I just do wrong? Can you just move it forward?
I have no idea, there it is.
Okay. And now I wanna go to one more slide, there. And then I wanna click on chart 11. Can I do that?
I'll do it.
All right. There, okay, all right. So, so I'm gonna show you a couple of slides that just break things down by different categories. So the first is by grade span. And so what you can see, you've got K to 2 on the top, in this case. And you've got K2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 12. And so if we look just at the, the bottom, the full inclusion, you can see the huge difference between K5 and 6 to 12. And so, so as students get older, there are a larger percentage of them that are in partial inclusion or substantially separate, or in particular for 9 to 12, in those separate schools. And, and so that's something just to think about. What, what is it that's going on? Are there different conversations that need to happen in the, in the middle school and high school than need to happen in elementary school? So, and again, this is looking at within numbers that are, that are fairly good. So it's, it's like, how, how can we think even better? And so that's the one with grade span. The next one is looking at it by disability category. And so, in this case, the full inclusion is on the left. And we start with developmental delay, which has the highest levels of full inclusion, which is really encouraging. And I've got a whole little thing about development delay that I'll talk about in a minute. But then if you, if you look towards the, the ones towards the right, you have students with emotional disabilities, students with autism, and students with intellectual disabilities, who are the least represented in full inclusion. And in fact, if you look at the students with intellectual disabilities, 70-some percent, 73% of them are in substantially separate classrooms. And, and the research does not demonstrate that that necessarily is the best environment for students with intellectual disabilities.
It actually says, there's no research that says it works.
None. So, so that's some, something to think about. But, and, and so when you, when you look at this, it's like, so, so the places where there are challenges are places that, it's not surprising that there are challenges with students with emotional disabilities, students with autism. Though, some of your, your separate programs are designed specifically for students with those disability categories. But it's worth thinking about, are there ways in which we can make some shifts to bring, to, to allow them to be more included, given that the research really encourages that? Yep. Okay, and so now, this is looking, so given, given that disability category, we decided to look at North Andover on the left, then Massachusetts, and then the nation. And so what you can see, autism is one that I pointed out as having a low, low levels of full inclusion. North Andover is actually in parity with the state and with the nation, which is to say, this is a challenge faced across multiple districts. That doesn't mean that you shouldn't engage in that challenge. I, I think, I think that you should. Emotional, students with emotional disabilities, in fact, North Andover is doing a little bit better. So again, that doesn't mean you should accept, oh, okay, we're better, we don't have to do anything about it. But it is good to acknowledge the places where, where you're doing challenging work. And again, students with intellectual disabilities, no students with intellectual disabilities are in full inclusion. And that's not the case across the state or federally. So, important to really, to look at that. And again, those are very small numbers. So it's very hard to do a quantitative analysis of that. You really have to look and say, what's happening with the individual students? And students with intellectual disabilities, I think, if we have time, I can look at that, we can look at that a little bit later. There's a very small percentage of students in North Andover. I think it's 1%, which is far lower than the state average and the national average. So then you see the intersection of how students are identified with disabilities and the services they receive. What is happening in North Andover that such a small percentage of students are being identified with intellectual disabilities? Are, are they being identified in other categories? And is it, and it just raised, it's just important to review that. When things look very different here than they look in other places, you wanna look and say, are we actually doing something really great that other people should be modeling themselves after? Or do we need to think about, should something different be done?
Interesting, that was a few, a few years, that was an area of disproportion, of disproportionality for us.
And, and I do believe that even now, there are, and again, the numbers are so small, but this, the number of students who are Latino is, is very high.
Yeah, that was the number.
And it continue, even though the percentage overall is very low, it's a very high percentage of students who are Latino, and so...
And we did a deep dive on that.
Yeah. So, so now, hopefully, two years from now, three years from now, you'll see some...
We don't have it anymore.
Okay, okay. So there you go.
As of this year.
So, and then, this is the last one. And this is by race, ethnicity. And again, with small numbers, it's very difficult to talk about significant differences. But you can look and see that in North Andover, the percentage of, of students who are in full inclusion, who are Black or African-American, is lower than the state and the nation. And so that's something to think about as well. And, and so with all of these, we, we wanted to make sure that you reflected on this and realize, you do need to really disaggregate the data. And then you need to recognize that the small numbers make it difficult to make huge generalizations, but it's always worth examining the patterns. So any questions about that before we shift to?
I just, just an example of, of just what you're talking about. For many years, we had a, the state points out areas for a district of significant disproportionality. And for a few years in North Andover, when I came here, our area of significant disproportionality were Hispanic and Latino students qualified. It's intellectually impaired. And the implication is that you have to use a significant amount of your funding to address that area of disproportionality broadly, with four students.
Right, exactly.
So it's, you know, it's significant when you look, you know, and so we do a deep dive on those. Maybe it was five, you know, so it's, it's just an interesting...
And so then it's important to really think, what is it that, what are the services that we are providing to those students to make sure that they are getting the, the best education they can get? Okay, so then, yeah, go to 60.
Did that work?
It did. We're on slices. Okay, so do we have time to go into a little bit more, review a little bit more of the data?
At this point, you might as well.
Okay.
In New York, we used to go until 2:00 AM.
So, so we'll talk a little...
My flight tomorrow, I have to leave at 4:45.
Okay. All right, we'll keep that in mind.
Just stay up.
Well, we'll talk a little bit about data, and then...
I have to leave home at 4:45.
And, and Lauren will share some of the resources, and then we'll wrap up with final questions. So, I hinted at this earlier about graduation rates. If you, if you look, what you see here is you see graduation rates for 2020, 2021, and 2022. And North Andover, students without disabilities is on the far left. The state without disabilities, then, then North Andover with disabilities is that third set, and the state with disabilities is on the right. And a couple of things to note is, there are four-year graduation rates and five-year graduation rates. Five-year graduation rates always look better because they include all the students that graduated in four years, plus those who are able to graduate in five years. And there's a lot of research about how that, that extra year captures a lot of students and can, can really promote success. But that's not what we're gonna talk about here. What's, what's really interesting is, if you look at the most recent numbers, so that bar, the far bar on the right, the students with disabilities in North Andover, the graduation rate was 94%. And the state, students without disabilities, was 90%. And so, as a district, your students with disabilities are graduating at higher rates than students without disabilities across the state. So, interest, and, and so then, you know, then because you're, you, you know your students really well, you know your district really well, you can then think about, okay, what is this saying? Then where are they going after this? What's, what, what is happening then? You know, is, is this a story of success? That we're seeing those students be successful post, post-secondary? Or is there, is there something else going on? But...
And the state does collect data. We, I don't think it's been reported yet. So, the last two years, we have reported post-secondary data specifically for special education graduates. So they've been collecting that data as well. We call them.
Are these full high school diplomas? Or are they certificate of graduates?
That's a really good question. This is state data that I got, so I think they're, they are the graduates.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, thinking again about the identification practices around how different disabilities are identified and which students are identified with which disability category. And again, we've got North Andover at the top, followed by Massachusetts, and then, and then national. And so you can see with autism that North Andover is very similar to Massachusetts. And you follow down, the places where you're, we're seeing differences, developmental delay. Much larger percentage of students in North Andover identify with developmental delay. Now, that's the category of students who are ages three to nine. And they, they, they cannot be in that category after that. And so here's a question. Is, is this actually a really great practice? Where these students are being identified and provided with the services they need and are overcoming those delays and are then moving into, into the general education population? And that this, is there, is there something going on here that other people should be looking at? Or not? I mean, but, but, you know, our supposition was that this might be something where North Andover is doing something that's, that's really working for kids. But it's worth looking at because it's so different.
Sorry, if, if that were the case, would you, would our numbers be lower in the other categories, right?
And that's where you need to really look at what happens to all of those students after, when they turn 10. Where, where are they going? Are they being classified...
With ID, or are they exited?
Have they been exited, or are they being...
Or are they giving a different...
Or are they going to an alternative...
Yeah, yeah.
Or they, no, they qualify, they, they are under a different disability or...
Or they fall behind for a different...
Exactly.
And let's be clear, developmental delay is not a disability.
Right.
It's a category to, and actually, Tom Hare created this one. He did it because he's like, why are we waiting for kids to get classified? And that wait-to-fail idea, like, just call it whatever you wanna call it. Give the kids some services, these babies. He wanted to get that through age 22, but he couldn't pull it off up to nine. So it's not a disability category. It's a place to just make sure kids early enough get services, without worrying about what it's called.
Right.
Right, as you build capacity, you know, I've seen districts where you build capacity at the elementary, and then they get the middle, and there's no programming, or there's no support.
Right.
And that's something we've worked hard at.
Yep, absolutely. Another thing to look at in this, again, we talked a little bit about it, is the intellectual disabilities. What does it mean that only 1% are identified as intellectual disabilities? Whereas, in, in, across the state, it's more, it's four, and then the other, my eyes are giving out on me, is eight. So, again, what are some of the identification practices that are contributing to that? The neurological category, where the state and the district are very different than the federal, that I think has to do with some different labeling practices in Massachusetts, so...
Neurological is not used, it's, it was used in New Jersey to mean a different type of brain usability. I don't think it's used there anymore. And here, I don't know, it's, it's, it's not one of the 13 categories that the feds say. We just map it to one of them.
Yeah, yeah, so...
And this is all to the fed standard of categories.
The federal government gives you 13 categories. You submit your data to the state, the state submits it to the feds, but the state has to submit it to the feds in their categories.
In the fed's categories.
So it, it's translated. Now, the state could just have the 13 categories that the feds have, but...
But Massachusetts.
I guess, I guess the question that I'm trying to ask, and I'm gonna probably get in trouble for, but if you had a student who tested and was identified as autistic here, right? Is that the exact same standard in every other state?
Not even the same standard in every class. It's so, if you look at kids that...
So we are comparing like pineapples and tomatoes.
No, it's like, it's that, it's that, most of these diagnoses are subjective.
Okay.
And so if you, if you do an evaluation and say, if it's an educational, well, autism is, is medical, but if, when you look at evaluation results across states, let's say, very, very different depending on definition. You can have one kid that's called, has a learning disability in one state, you cross the border, they have autism.
Right.
And you can do the same thing within schools. I'm not talking about North Andover here. You can do the same thing across schools and across, it's, it's very, very subjective, most, except for blindness, and even blindness has different levels. Deafness has different levels, but most of these are subjective, and the criteria is not, is, is not definitive.
So if my son qualifies in Massachusetts with a specific learning disability, with dyslexia, dyslexia, he could move someplace else and might or might not then qualify because of the different levels or however that state measures it, might not.
Correct.
And we've seen a lot of that between, when kids go between Massachusetts and New Hampshire.
Correct.
But let's say that if you look at kids with, with disabilities, there, the range of a kid who's got a learning disability is so wide, it could cross over to something else.
Yeah.
And at the same time, if a student has dys, is dyslexic.
Well, some states, some states dyslexia is no longer under, is no longer required to be under IDA. Some states you have dyslexia under 504 only, or just in ed. It's all over the place.
But they still, but still who the kid is, we still have, they still have some needs that we have to address.
That's the point of development delay, just teach the kid, who cares what it's called?
Right.
Super fast, I'm just wondering if, I mean, I think the, the national average, or the national percentages are certainly interesting, but should we really be more concerned with comparing ourselves at the state level? Because of the differences across states?
I think that's one way to look at it. Another way to look at it is the way you're prioritizing the literacy and really focusing on building tier one and tier two and tier three in terms of getting the right instruction to the kids, no matter what their label is.
Yes.
If that's where you decide to really focus, as opposed to, and, and when you think about identification practices, you're looking at, do we need to think about changing the discrepancy model? If those are the two priorities that you're identifying, maybe you don't really look at this table too much right now. Wait and see, and see what all, what all that does for the students.
That's helpful, thank you.
And with the new IEP process, and this is, this is new information to me, that's actually like I'm, I'm getting, we all are getting to understand it, they're actually like de-emphasizing probably based on what you got, what you're just talking about along the federal guidelines, they're de-emphasizing the disability.
Yeah.
Really, really de-emphasizing what the disability is. Again, with that mindset of, because we're just dealing with what the actual situation is. So with the disability, that's just a federal standard. We, because in Massachusetts, we did primary, secondary, tertiary. And now they definitely don't want secondary and tertiary. And they're saying that the primary is real, is to meet the federal standard. But the concern should be student-centered, student-driven about the student.
I have ADHD, and if my, if somebody sitting next to me has ADHD, we probably need somewhat different things.
Okay.
And I might look, and, and when I first got labeled as ADHD, they labeled me as LD because they used to go together so much. But now they don't, and I realize, I mean, so the definition, I'm saying the definitions also get fluid. So the LD diagnosis is gone for me, but the ADHD sticks. And now it could also be, if you look at the way autism looks right now, I could probably go there, because the spectrum is so wide. So it's just really fluid.
Okay, very helpful, thanks.
Okay. And now, this is looking at disabilities by race and ethnicity. And the one thing that I'll point out, it's getting late, is just looking again at the Hispanic Latinx group, where there's a much larger proportion of Latinos with disabilities, 23% compared to the overall district population of 14%. But as Marcy said, that's something that you guys have been, have been working on. So, and I think I am going to stop there, right?
I don't know.
I think that's the last one.
This one? Can't see.
Yes. Given our conversation on MCAS and our conversation about disability category, I think we should retire this slide from this presentation. Because those are two things that you guys are looking at saying, you're probably not going to focus on that much. So maybe we don't, really don't want to do that. And I think we can say the data, data portion is done, and so we need to then go to resources. There. Okay, so before we, are there any final questions about the data before we shift to the last section? And obviously, if you review this and have other questions, we're more than happy to answer them. Okay.
So just as an FYI, we, at the collaborative, we're collecting, always collecting resources. And just to make sure that you know that you, there are things you can do with everything we have said. Sorry, I'm getting tired now. All right, so in each of these, you have a list of resources, the description of what they are, the type of format, and then we've tried to connect it to the sub-rex that we've given you. So there are resources you can use to help you move in the directions that you want to move with the recommendations. So we've given you resources on, these are all for one, these keeps going for one, a lot on MTSS. So just more resources on that. Some films we've given you, there's some new films coming out now. One thing we didn't talk about and that I would encourage you to think about is this idea of presumed competence. I wish we had talked about that, I'll just say it real quickly. The idea is you always presume competence of a child, particularly a child with an intellectual disability, because you never, ever know what they know that they can't express. And the more, the higher the standard is, the higher the kid can go. There, there's lots of research out now about people who couldn't speak and thought, people thought they had nothing going on, and then all of a sudden, there's a communication device, and they're in college. I mean, so you just don't know. And so you presume competence, because if you don't do that, then it's a dangerous assumption. There's another way of calling it the least dangerous assumption. You don't want to not think of high standards for a kid, because if you're wrong, it's dangerous. And you want to always just assume competence.
It's a great talk.
So I would encourage, as you're shifting kids with intellectual disabilities and sub-separate, shifting that away from that, think about presumed competence, the least dangerous assumption, they're really, really important concepts. Were you going to say something?
No.
And so, yeah, there's Tom Hare, that's him. So just, yeah, I'm just giving you these things. There are films, there are resources, there are books, there's professional development. We, we do, and I don't mean to be promoting the collaborative, I'm not trying to do that, but we do these professional development series. And we have podcasts and all you, they're all open to anybody, so feel free. And we have a resource center with all this and more in it, but we just try to give you the resources that connect with what we've offered you. And that's all I have to say about that, just wanted to share it with you so you can use them.
We just, we had Sora in the middle and high school, and we just bought it for all of elementary.
Sora's great. We're trying to get Sora to support the collaborative, we love them. Are there other, any questions about anything at all? Because this is the end of our, what we want to do.
How often should we be looking at how well we're doing, how much we're improving? Should we be looking at that every six months, every year, every two years? How, how often do we need to reevaluate how well we're doing?
Well, with the continuous improvement model, you want it to just be ongoing. And so you, you want some structure around that. I know that one structure that I know a lot of people use is this 100-day benchmark. So every 100 days, you've given yourself goals, you've given yourself action steps, and then you go back and check. But you want to, yeah, I could see people taking these recommendations and doing that 100-day thing. You don't want to bite off everything, you want to get some things in place, you want to set expectations, you want to make sure that you're not assuming the data's going to change right away, you need to change practices before the data changes. But I would suggest that it's never stopping. It's always going on. But get a, get a system going, so it doesn't feel haphazard. So one, again, one place I've, one way I've seen it done regularly is this 100-day cycle. Every 100 days, you're looking at whatever you're trying to work on. And so then it's ongoing. With this type of a review, it depends. There's no, there's no rule of thumb.
Would it be a big lift for you to look back a year or two for us?
Sorry?
Would it be a big lift for you to look back a little bit for us, to see how we've done over recent years? Remember in the beginning I asked, this is a snapshot, right?
So, so yes, we could definitely do that. I'm, given the conversation about MCAS, is, is MCAS where you would like to focus? Or are you interested in disability categories, or?
And we're not going to, we've got to be careful, we're not, we're looking at data, we're not looking at COVID years, because it's too weird.
So you have to go farther than that.
We did, ma'am.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons why in this case, we didn't actually give the three-year trends, because it's just, things are just not typical.
Okay, just was curious, like.
Yeah, so, so think about it, if you, if you think there's something that's really worth looking at.
There may be certain categories that make sense.
And our data, just to be in, you know, again, transparency around like, it's particularly pre-COVID, our data is so much better the last two years than, I mean, than obviously those two years didn't make sense, than that previous year, which was at 18, 19, I think I gave you. So the, the data that we're compiling from the last three years on, and so we'll look backwards, probably going to be from, you know, this point was probably going to be more helpful than going back.
Than what we have.
And there are trends that post-COVID, things have shifted in certain ways from pre-COVID, you know, evaluations.
There are shifts now, since we lost, you know, since November to, to now.
Right.
I mean, pretty, probably some significant.
Yeah, there's a lot of shifts because of the break in people. Again, if there's no other ballgame in town, people go to special ed. So numbers are rising across the country, especially for kids with behavioral issues, social, emotional issues. People are turning to special ed when it's trauma, and there's a lot of debate, is trauma a disability or not?
Okay, thank you.
And I would say, I'd agree with that. I think that, you know, coming out of COVID, folks were concerned about learning loss and all those different things. And we've seen students have trouble regulating, you know, themselves.
And the teachers too. I mean, let's be clear, everybody's got, everybody went through this.
Yeah, all of us, and superintendents too. And, but, you know, I think that this report has a lot of stuff that is easily married into the framework in which we do now.
Yeah.
And it's the work we're doing, because we're always trying to continuously improve. And whether it's progress monitoring, you know, for four to six weeks, or whether it's, you know, some of the more substantive assessments that we have.
And I would just say, I mean, obviously, I mean, I'm, as of going into that, and I think I was, you know, transparent in terms of like, I'm pretty aware of areas of our, you know, that we, of areas of growth that we need. And I'm obviously concerned about that, and we see it, and I agree with the points. And there's some, you know, differences of opinions as we go through things. But I also just, again, not to polyanor, but it's also I'm finding it inspiring, because I feel like it is, it calls out some of the work that we are doing. And I think people and teachers appreciate hearing, we need to start looking at this with a different lens. And so it supports some of the struggles that we're seeing all around. And it's not that anyone's, like, it's not that anyone's doing a bad job, it's just, I think, the shift in focus. And I think we need help with that. I think that's part of the, the piece of, I think the district needs help with that. I think this understanding with, with families' understanding, with our teachers' understanding, I think it's a whole community process of really understanding kind of the, the flow between giving students access and what that actually, what that means and what that can mean for students.
And that's, that's a really great point, Marcy, because it's really, it's not always about the teaching, it's about the learning, you know, and having that mind shift is critical.
Have a student panel of kids with disabilities, let them do 100 days and tell you how you're doing.
And Marcy, I appreciate the humility in this, because it's going to be really being open to being humble and, and changing and really realizing there are things that we need to improve, that is going to make it work as we, as we strive to put things into place to do better.
Thank you. I think it's also important that we, there's a lot, right? And so like, part of me is like, what do we do? I'm like, I like that there's directions in the recommendations, because that helps us really wrap around, like, focus on like what we should do. But it's also like, well, what do we do first? Like, what, how do we then, and this is more a question for us than for you, but you might have something to say, but I was like, what do we do next? Like, what's the next, what's our next right step?
Yeah, and I, I want to add to that, because one of the things that really, you know, didn't come into play was how the school committee comes into play. And every single one of us have made a promise to each and every one of our students to advocate for them. And we, I think we all take that role very much to heart, and we want to make sure that whatever we're doing is helping to further the goal of helping each and every one of our students.
So I think we, like, I may, this is a suggestion for, for you, Mr. Chair, but like, I need time to digest this, and I think you sort of outlined this on, on slide 79, but like, we, I think maybe we need to have an open discussion next week about what next steps should, could look like.
And there are recommendations, there are priority recommendations.
Again, those are ours.
Your priorities, right, understood.
But that doesn't mean that they should be yours.
No, got it, but at least it's.
It's a place to start.
It's a place to start.
Yeah.
Right, and it's, you know, in the report, there's some low-hanging fruit, and there's also, you know, other things that.
Well, and I think in just even in terms of, I'll just speak for myself, but like, I need to ju, like, there's a lot there for me to digest. And prior, like, I think I, I think I have a, a pretty good understanding of what the priorities need to be. We've discussed what some of the priorities need to be. I'm confident I can at some point articulate those, but we're going to need, I'm going to need feedback, you know? So I think I, as I digest it, and we have more conversations, and we talk about it, and I agree, some sort of committee moving forward about, of stakeholders that we've, we've talked about, of needing to really digest this.
I mean, talk about implementation.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with Mr. Hicks, that maybe we, at an upcoming school committee, have an open discussion where we can, you know, discuss what we need to do, what kind of maybe subcommittee we can put into place, and certainly make sure we, we invite CPAC back to that, so we can make sure we can have all adequate stakeholders a part of that.
And we need to talk to our teachers.
And our teachers, yeah.
And so I was thinking, I was thinking along the lines of, you know, having like a superintendent's advisory committee, some type of committee, because it's going to take a lot of work to digest all this, analyze it, interpret.
And this isn't all of it, you know, I mean, I think that's for people to, to, so, yeah, so there's more, and there's more. And I appreciate the, you know, the focus of this. But there was, you know, there's more, there are more pieces in that.
And one way to sell it well, and this is the truth, it's going to improve everybody's. Don't just sell it as special ed, don't.
Or best practices.
Yeah, it's all, it's good, what we were talking about is just good for kids.
Yeah, as you said at the outset, right? That's like first line you, you gave, right?
I also think, so upcoming next Monday, you'll be presenting and talking with our CPAC, correct?
Yep.
And then we have a meeting here on April 4th, and we'll be welcoming two new members to the committee, but I think that's also a good time for CPAC, after you've heard the, had the time to listen to the, and ask your questions, to come back and make, and give us feedback in public comment to communicate like what you are thinking and priorities that would matter to you as well. I think that, it lays out nicely that you're doing that next week, and then we have an opportunity to hear back from you during public comment at the next meeting.
And I also, I'm going to open up a form tomorrow, that the letter that we put out to families yesterday has a, and this is for anybody, a, like, a place that they can, if they can't come or whatever, if they're not comfortable coming, that they can put questions in there as well.
Like a good, a feedback form?
A Google form, yep, yep.
Yeah, I think this is going to be on our agenda for a while, so. I've got, received, message received.
Yeah, I think what's important is I think we need, I think all folks, all the stakeholders, people need time to actually go through this. So I think it's good to come back, but it may be, it may take some time. And, you know, like I said in the beginning of the year, I don't know if I'd do it again and have three reviews in one year. It, it's been quite a feat, but it's nice to find out areas we're doing well, the areas we need improvement, we certainly want to work on. But these aren't overnight, there's nothing that happens overnight, right? These are things that we have to prioritize, we have to set in motion, and then we have to work towards, and so.
But I also think it helps us in the district, like, as we look forward towards a new strategic plan, and then summer as we plan for next year, and we think about our goals, we always share a goal, that this is, these are the things that we can do, that work collaboratively together on. And I think that helps give us the shape and accountability we need to make sure we're doing what's best for our kids.
And I can't stress enough, like, there are a lot of really good things in motion that align with a lot of the things that have all brought to our attention. So that in itself is, you know, a move in positive, a really positive direction.
All right, and then as we have questions for you, we can reach out through Marcy to get that information to you.
Absolutely.
So on behalf of the school committee, I'd like to, unless anybody has more comments, I'd like to thank you for your good presentation tonight, thorough, and appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, at 10:15, we're still in the superintendent's report here.
It feels, it feels normal.
I'd like to continue.
Do an extra special one for you tonight.
Anyone with ADHD that needs to energize, you can stand up for a quick stretch. All right, here we go. All right, superintendent's report, we're on C. Folks, last week, we had a, the opportunity to run a podcast called Nightside. Dr. Meeley and I are the co-hosts, and we had a special guest, Dr. Patrick Tuttwiler. He's the Secretary of Education for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So it's linked to the agenda, check it out, it was pretty awesome. He is appointed by the governor and he oversees, you know, early childhood ed, K to 12, and then higher ed, so check that out. And then I was thrilled last night, we had a couple hours at North Andover High School. We hosted a vaping awareness night for parents. We had about 70 people there that signed up and came. That's the most people we've had since Dr. England came, probably 15 years ago to an event. So it was put on between the police department, the fire department, youth services, the school department. It was a panel discussion, we had a couple of community members, including a nurse, as well as Anthony Sidere, talking about addiction. So it was really great to get parents involved to participate. And I was thrilled because, you know, it's something that we have to tackle as a community. It's a problem everywhere. And a lot of parents were really surprised when they had a chance to go down and look and say, oh, that's not a highlighter in my kid's backpack, that's a vape. That's not a charger for your phone, that's a vape, you know? And we also had a former student, so it was great perspectives and was thrilled to be a part of it. The principals were there and it was a great turnout. So at that, I'm going to turn over, the superintendent's report is officially closed. And I would turn it over to the chair.
All right, so luckily, this will be really quick, to coin a phrase. So we had our community chat March 2nd, thank you to.
It was us.
Yeah, it was you two, thank you, ladies, for hosting that. Any, any feedback from that?
Unfortunately, we did not have anyone show up in the chat.
All right.
But we, but we had a nice chat.
We did have a nice chat. Yeah, I think, I think we really need to work on.
Publicity?
That, and also making sure, you know, I think we have a sheep shearing festival, maybe looking at doing a table there since we missed the fall festival, being where there's more public.
Where more people will be anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got you, yeah, I agree. That will work. That'll definitely work. You have educator Hall of Fame nominations coming up, they're due April 30th. And I think, Mr. Hicks, you have, do you have anything to add on that that's yours?
Yeah, I'm in charge of it this year.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a wonderful thing we, that we have a program that, Mr. McDevitt, I'm going to rely on your institutional knowledge now, how long have we had the Hall of Fame? Is this something you started with that one?
I think it went back to like, 2008 or something?
Seven.
So it's even older than your service.
Oh, yeah.
But it's an opportunity to recognize teachers who have retired and who spent a long time and were committed to our system. Nominations are due by the 30th and then I will be forming, I'll be in charge and we'll have a little committee get together to do that work, to sift through and to make the recommendation back to the committee. And we want to do that before the end of June, correct? That's our.
Yes, when, who can make a nomination?
So there is a nomination process that you can go online and find the nomination forms that need to be submitted. And anyone can make the nomination, but there are some forms that need to go there. And one of the challenges sometimes is making sure that we, we like to talk to people that worked with the folks and sometimes that is hard.
Yeah, this is my 26th year in the district, across all levels. And oftentimes, we're tracking people down. Mr. McDevitt was very helpful with the last one, getting the folks. But as we move forward, it becomes more challenging. But the form is linked right to the agenda, so you can click. I think you can pick it up at town, I think we have them at town, we have them at different places too, hard copies, so.
All right.
And then they're adopted in this October and then we'll make the opening remarks at next year's teacher.
Appreciation night.
Uh, no, teacher, the first day, opening ceremonies.
That's awesome.
Opening night, opening day.
Opening day.
It's night, that's where we're at.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So I just wanted to highlight a few upcoming CPAC events that are on the calendar here. There's virtual, oh, these don't have dates, I apologize for that, some of them don't have dates. But I know that there's, here's the ones I do know. CPAC and AVAC Community Outreach Event, tentatively April 10th and 13th. Special Olympics, April 7th, rain date, April 10th. June 7th, thank you. Kindergarten, AVAC Kindergarten Information Night, April 24th, 6:30 to 7:30. There's 19th Annual Autism Advocacy Day at the State House, April 9th. This is not, I get great immediate feedback, I got it right. We're plant, they're planning a rights law presentation, that's TBD right now, yes? Okay, LPAC and I think, I think. Am I missing something? What, what, am I missing anything?
Our support group that we had last night for the first time monthly, that meets every third Wednesday, will meet again next third Wednesday.
Okay.
But we met last night for the first time.
All right, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Okay, so that's, that's number C. Informational for my colleagues on the committee and since the two incoming ones happen to be in the, in the room here, they can hear it now. But for those of us that are, there were a bunch of MA Mass School Committee resolutions that are set to expire in November. It's linked to the agenda here. I just would ask that we look at these and see if there's any that we would like to sponsor. These are, there are 17 resolutions that are set to expire in November of this year, 2024. And a district, any district, needs to, if, if the district feels it's appropriate, needs to advocate for this, or otherwise they go away. So I would ask my colleagues to look at the linked, it's a, you know, two pages of potential ones that we might consider being the advocate or sponsor for. Basically, we just have to say we want to see it proceed, okay? So that's informational. And then, very quickly, Townwide Equity Audit Update is ongoing. I believe it is supposed to be completed by June. That's not just the schools, but that's all, all of North Andover, so again, informational. And I just want to mention that I attended, MCAS also had an IEP workshop on the new IEP plans that I attended. It was, I think it was just last night, actually. It seems like, seems like a long time ago, but it's really good if somebody, if, if anyone is interested in how that works, they did record it, you can access it on the MASC website. And if you have any trouble, please ask me, I can get you there. And that concludes the chair's report.
I just wanted to mention, I forgot to say, today is National Down Syndrome Day and a lot of our students and staff wore mismatched socks. It was, you know, to bring more awareness. And it create, the mismatched socks actually created a lot of conversation, so I meant to say that earlier.
All right, any comments on my report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to school, yeah, school building committee updates, North Andover Middle School first.
Yeah, so last week, the following activities were performed at the site. There was framing of the interior for the first and second floor walls. They continued to install the exterior wall boards. There was roughing plumbing work, continued installation of the conduit for electrical work of the conduit runs in the crawl space is in progress. They worked on the HVAC, installing ductwork on the first floor. And they installed some temporary piping to connect the roof drains to the nearest catch basin, so that's all really great. And that stuff is going to continue through this week. I was not able to attend the building committee meeting yesterday. Mr. Meeley, is there anything of importance that happened at yesterday's building committee that we should update everyone with?
Not particularly, approved some IT.
And some network stuff.
Exactly, but the main point is that they are still on schedule without any real major change orders having occurred.
Yep, so we are pushing diligently to keep us on that done by early August date. So we can occupy.
Well, when we say done, it's done the addition and then they move into renovation, which starts over the summer but continues through the school year.
So we can be done, done in the winter.
Twenty-five, right?
January, February of 25.
Correct.
All right, thank you. And your final, final report on Kitchard?
It's done, it's built.
That was good.
Yeah, it was great. It's moving along. The committee met Tuesday of this week and their prior meeting was with MSBA. And that was, there's seven representatives from the MSBA and then three from North Andover. And they went over the kind of requirements for the, the building company.
We interviewed the design firms.
Yeah, the design firm, sorry, thank you. And they actually selected, I'm going to probably say it wrong, Machado and Silveira.
So, Machado Silvetti.
Silvetti, okay, all right. So they were selected, so that now kind of continues on with the next part of the process. Just kind of reviewed the timeline and everything else seemed going along right on schedule, gearing up for town hall or town meeting in, in May, on the 14th, I believe, where we'll start to look for some funding as we go into design, so, anything else?
Will the goal be to, will we be requesting funding for the design this year? Is that where we are at?
I believe so.
Yeah.
At town, yes, yeah. Yeah, the only thing I'll add is that Machado Silvetti, this will be their first MSBA project, which is actually a good thing. They're a very reputable firm, but they had gotten into public schools. And from everything we've heard, one, they're very good, but two, those who get in and for their first project want to prove themselves so they get more MSBA projects, so we're assuming that's a good thing.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. I don't believe we have any old business, so new business?
Yeah, new business. Ms. Lathen will be talking tonight about the Student Opportunity Act. We approved the plan three years ago. You know, it wasn't really tied to any money at first, the state did not come through. You know, it increased, I think, last year in chapter 70. And we have to present to you folks what we're doing so that we can stay eligible for the grant process, to apply for grants. As you know, we've applied for a lot of grants and we get just about all of them. For example, this past February break, we got $288,000 for the Acceleration Academy for mathematics. So this is really just important that we continue moving forward with the work that we're doing. Ms. Lathen?
I'm going to ask Carol Arkham and Kristin Endo, two of our expert grant writers in the district. Their fingers are typing away all the time, but I say that with a little bit of jest, but it's not jestful at all. They are so instrumental in helping us receive the grants. We are excited about the Accelerated Academy. I think it's really, it's wonderful that North Andover can participate in both February and April break. And then we have our grant already in for summer this year. And that is, you know, you don't see that in all of the districts. So as Dr. Yuland said, we're here tonight to present to you the Student Opportunity Plan as part of our, as part of putting together the Student Opportunity Act plan that we did this year. And again, this was Carol Arkham, Kristin Endo, and Ben Cabrera, who have been working on this with me. We have to present to you the school committee, give you an overview of this, and then the school committee ultimately votes to approve the, our initiatives and to say that you support us putting monetary resources towards them. Again, this is the overarching goal of the Student Opportunity Act, is to ensure that every student in the Commonwealth has access to high-quality public education regardless of their zip code. I know tonight's a long night, but I have to say that I really feel like the things that you heard tonight, from the data presentation to the special education review and then to Student Opportunity Act, they are really very tightly woven together. So it's way past everybody's bedtime, but I appreciate that three things work really well together. So our Student Opportunity Plan, just so you have a sense of what that is, how it's different from district strategic plans. The district strategic plan serves as a comprehensive plan that describes the full set of strategies that the district will implement, support all students in their district. And as I think we just said, we are currently starting to like, look at our strategic plan and what that might look like, given some of the new information we've learned. But by contrast, the Student Opportunity Plan addresses a subset of the district's overall initiatives, focusing on evidence-based programs and strategies that improve the educational experiences and outcomes for some students. And these students are including our English learners, our students with disabilities, and low-income students. Dr. Yuland said to you that this is a three-year plan, just so that you have a little sense of what the cycle looked like. We all know that COVID disrupted just about everything in everybody's life and the Student Opportunity Plan was not void of that. So January 2021 was when we, districts first submitted their three-year plan. The first submission was, cycle was modified due to COVID, so you can see what happened in 2022 and 2023. So now this, we're returning, DSE is returning to the regular submission cycle as required by law. So districts will present, all districts will submit their plan by April of 2024. In the spring, we'll have a progress update. And then the spring of 2026, we'll submit a progress update. And then 2027 would be a new SOA plan. So tonight, what we're going to share with you are the five components of the plan. The plan's much larger, we go into more depth, but we're giving you an overview. So the five things we'll hear about is a summary of our district plan, a little bit of work on, so this is what the plan requires us to do. Summarize our district plan. It requires us to analyze our data and select student groups for focused support. It requires us to set ambitious three-year targets for improving student achievement. It requires us to engage families and caretakers and other stakeholders. And it requires us to select evidence-based programs and strategies to address the disparities. Now I'm going to have Kristin talk to you a little bit about each part.
Excellent, and it does, all tied together with everything we've been talking tonight, our plan in summary has three major points. Implementing high-quality curriculum materials at the tier-one level across all of our grades and all of our schools. A comprehensive approach to early literacy education, most specifically K to three, steeped in the research, steeped in the science of reading, and structured multi-tier systems of support. And so our SOA plan really does line up with our data and our special education recommendations as well.
So the data piece, as you've heard tonight, you've heard a lot of different data points that I think really reiterate all this need. One of the pieces, the tools that DSE has created is a data dashboard, so it's very visual. The red, the deeper the red means there's a larger disparity between our all-students group and that particular group. So this is showing the MCAS 2023 data, the percent of students meeting and exceeding on that MCAS exam. The blue means that the students are above the all-students and that's that second column there. So in addition to the MAP data and the DIBELS data and other MCAS data, just a quick little sample of some of the data that we use to identify the groups. As we've mentioned before, our English learners, our students with disabilities, our students who have low income, and our Hispanic Latino are kind of the targeted groups that we are looking to support the opportunity gaps that exist currently. Advanced coursework completion is something we shared with you in the fall for one of our MCAS, or one of our state accountability measures that kind of goes along with the MCAS reporting system. And so, again, working on some opportunities to create deeper pathways for students to reach more advanced coursework by 11th and 12th grade. And again, you can see in the chart, those same subgroups are also, have some opportunity gaps that exist that we'd like to close. The ambitious three-year targets, again, we could go through and select them. DSE did something nice, I think, is to say, would you like to choose the lowest-performing students as your target? And so we have said, yes, let's, let's stick to those targets you set for us. We're going to work towards them anyway. So again, just sample of what are, this is the lowest-performing student group and the baseline data from our 2023 MCAS and the target for both our non-high schools, so grades three through eight, and then our high school students. And you see in each of those, our target is moving the average scaled score in math and ELA between four and five scaled score points, so increasing by that amount.
Another aspect is to engage stakeholders. We used a lot of the information that we heard about tonight as well. Information from existing groups, existing surveys of teachers, parents, other stakeholders. We would love going forward to plan and have additional groups using our CPAC, our LPAC, and our school councils in order to help us review this plan every 100 days or less often. And just the idea of our, you know, our overall district initiatives, ongoing meetings, parent liaisons, nightly news, all of those things that we do to engage our stakeholders. And so this is, so for each one of our objectives, we had to select evidence-based programs. We needed an EPB, new acronym for me, and strategies to address disparities. So there's our HQIM, our high-quality instructional materials. We are running a, for elementary math review and wit and wisdom, we are rolling out, we're about year two for grades K to five. We're piloting it at the middle school level, comprehensive early approach. There's this thing called DIBELS at M-class that you might have heard about, Foundations and Hecarty, and then the MTSS. And so we do have a, we've got a grant to fund an MTSS district team that's working through, working with the Hill for Literacy. Kara mentioned the Acceleration Academies. And the Calculus Project is a fabulous project we have to get more students who are traditionally marginalized into calculus by the end of high school.
All right.
That's where we are.
Questions, comments?
I'm sorry. Elementary math, what might we hear or, or discuss or whatever we do with that, the, what potential changes might happen? Currently, we use the original Urica. Are we thinking about Urica Math Squared or something completely different, or?
That is one, I don't know how much, how much information I'm allowed to share.
Yeah, so we have a very active math committee. Ben and Kara are leading that. We would very much like to come back and give you a full presentation on that app, on the math committee, on the programs that we are currently, where we have, through the work that the committee did, following the model that they used, set by DSE, to review, we'd like to share with you the programs that we are currently looking at and then the one we would ultimately like to pilot.
And have, has the district been participating in the eval select process?
Yes. Yes, we have.
Yep.
It's fun.
So we'd actually come back, Joe, and we'd come back to the committee, we have a final recommendation.
Yes.
You'd have that, but Joe's having a lot of fun tonight with it.
It's all, I love all this stuff.
He's loving it. Yes, Ben Cabrera said he can't wait to come and share, the work that the group has done, a wonderful job in a short amount of time, they are meeting lots of times, and we are already starting to do some site visits, which is really exciting.
All right, any other comments, questions? Ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, it's time for public comment, part two, if anyone would like to speak. Everybody good? Okay, all right, with that, I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn, so I can make my flight.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion that's been seconded, so we'll vote for the final time, Ms. Petrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
For the final time, Mr. McDevitt, yes, and Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, the chair votes yes, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.